There is a cradle expression to walk together. Where life is hard, people depend upon and help each other. So that man may pray together to praise the same moral principles and together reaffirm. There is a cradle expression to walk together. Where life is hard, people depend upon and help each other. So that man may pray together to praise the same moral principles and together reaffirm. There is a cradle expression to walk together. Where life is hard, people depend upon and help each other. So that man may pray together to praise the same moral principles and together reaffirm.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I open the ordinary council meeting on the twenty-third of September twenty twenty-five at seven ten P M. Could I please call on councillor D'Souza to read the acknowledgement of country?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I would like to acknowledge that we're meeting on the land of the Bajigal and the Gadigal peoples who occupied the Sydney coast, being the traditional owners. On behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respects to the elders, past and present, and to Aboriginal people in attendance today.
Councillor Hamilton to read the prayer.
Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon this council and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Randwick and Australia. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. There being no request to join via audiovisual link, as all councillors are in attendance this evening, could I please have someone move the confirmation of the minutes? Moved councillor Rosenfeld, seconded councillor Asgari, all those in favour. All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Councillors, I now move two declarations of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interests. Councillor Rosenfeld.
Okay, with regards to CP twenty-six twenty-five, the company I work for has dealings with I X O M and as such I'm declaring its significant pecuniary interest and will not debate or vote in the matter.
Thank you. Are there any further declarations? Okay, I have a couple. Just one second. One second, my apologies. Thank you. So I have one declaration, C S forty-eight slash twenty twenty-five, Snake Park Community Consultation Outcomes. It is a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest, I will be voting. It has recently been brought to my attention by an interested community member that I'm listed as a non-playing member of the Randwick Petersham Cricket in their annual report. It is my assumption that this is by virtue of my role as either the mayor or as a Randwick City councillor, noting that Randwick City Council is a community partner of the club. I was previously unaware of the non-playing membership. The second declaration relating to this particular item is that a close personal friend of mine is a previous employee of Sam Crawford Architects. He did not work on this project and has ceased his employment at the firm. C S forty-nine slash twenty-five, Maruba Surf Life Saving Club redevelopment is a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest and I will be voting in the matter. I am a volunteer patrolling and previously competing member of the Maruba Surf Life Saving Club. I do not hold any office to actively participate in the management or administration of the organisation, nor do I engage in any other activities to any significant extent which would be considered as giving rise to a particularly strong affiliation. The last item is, actually just one second. The last item is C S sixty twenty-five, one to eleven Rainbow Street, Kingsford Development Project Update. I have a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest and I will be voting. I am the secretary of the Maruba branch of the A L P which periodically meets at the Juniors Maruba without charge like all other community organisations and not-for-profits, including the Liberal Party of Australia, supporting groups, precincts and other volunteer organisations. I've also previously been a general member and honorary member declared and returned by virtue of my community role as mayor of the Juniors Groups of Clubs. Thank you very much. Are there any further declarations? There being no further declarations, we now move to addresses by members of the public. I will read the chairperson's announcement, the privacy warning in respect to the Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act. Members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause five twenty to five twenty-three of council's code of meeting practice. Audio/video recordings of meetings are prohibited without the express permission of council. A person may be expelled from the meeting for using or having used an audio/video recorder without the express authority of council. All members of the public addressing tonight's meeting will have a maximum of four minutes in which to put forward their case with no extensions available. Presenters will be stopped when the four minutes has expired. Councillors may ask questions of presenters at the end of each public submission. Our first speaker this evening relates to C S forty-eight twenty-five, Snake Park Community Consultation Outcomes, speaking against Mister John Francis.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councillors, general manager, council officers and my fellow Randwick residents. When we say I'm speaking against, it's actually a mixed bag. We're actually supportive of the local upgrade of local amenities, but on the subject of the cricket facility, we are, we would recommend a deferral decision. So I'm representing the local community at Snake Park and I want to just be able to provide feedback on the updated community engagement. When I spoke to the council earlier this year on the proposal to build an indoor cricket facility in the park, we were concerned that we lose our green space, we lose valuable habitat, we face increased traffic and competition for parking. And for that, we get an aircraft hangar building in the park for the exclusive use of the cricket club whilst we get to foot the bill. I noted that data should be used to make this decision, that indoor cricket nets remain for hire at Moor Park for forty bucks an hour instead of the millions that this will cost. I noted that we yet to see any public rationale on the need for a centre despite the council already taking a vote on the, giving the Cricket Centre a name. But today we get to see the data and results of the community consultation. Next slide, please. In your executive summary, the conclusion is that the community has spoken and that by a small majority, there is support for the facility. I have read all one hundred and twenty-eight pages of the community consultation and that conclusion is incorrect. Next slide, please. We are Randwick Council, talking about a Randwick project being built in a Randwick park and paid for by Randwick residents. I understand that if you aren't paying for this and you aren't being impacted, that you're more likely to vote to want the facility. Waverley Council, when faced with exactly the same question on an indoor facility in one of their parks, made the appropriate decision to give more weight to the community over the few that stood to benefit. If you look how Randwick residents voted, you get a very different picture. The majority are unsupportive. Next slide, please. The numbers you've been given also don't include the unique submissions received by the council. Once you add those important voices, it becomes an even stronger case to not support this proposal. Lastly, there is a level of friction in using the have-yoursay submission process. More than ninety percent of unique visitors to the website took no further action. Given that local community was only given a short time to respond, a petition was organised to understand views. Next slide, please. When you remove double counting between the survey and the petition, the picture is even more stark. More than ninety percent of the local residents don't want this facility. The rationale to defer the decision on the cricket facility is simple. Firstly, this decision is not urgent. This part of the project isn't even scheduled until twenty twenty-nine at the earliest, and there's no reason to make a rushed decision today that will lock us into a plan that is deeply flawed. Secondly, the revised proposal is worse than the original, resulting in a greater loss of community green space and more than one point two five million in additional costs. The council has not considered seriously viable alternatives such as locating the facility in a more suitable site like Heffron Park. And lastly, Randwick residents are not supportive of the plan. We urge you to listen to the genuine concerns of your residents. Please defer the recommendation of the facility and allow for a thorough and transparent review of alternatives. Let me finish by thanking the council for the opportunity for the community to be heard through this consultation and for the council's visit to the park. This is an important issue for the community, so thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And let me finish by asking whether I have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions? Councillor Sid.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I just want to reiterate, you've got nothing wrong with stage one, as in the amenities.
Very, very supportive. The committee is very supportive of the amenities upgrade. The buildings are very old, tired. They will benefit all the sporting clubs that use the fields. They make absolute sense to go and do those.
And that's virtually what you found through the residents.
Yes, and if you read the responses, in the written responses, you can see all of those are very, very supportive of those upgrades.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions of the speaker? There being no further questions of the speaker, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The second speaker against is Mister Stephen Payne.
Thanks. Mayor Parker, councillors, Randwick Council staff and fellow residents, first of all, thanks very much for the opportunity to, an invitation to speak tonight. My name's Stephen Payne and I speak on behalf of a group of people that have branded ourselves as a Save Snake Park group. We're a growing number of ratepayers who are strongly opposed to the current plan for State Park as presented in the recent survey and also as outlined in the tonight's recommendations to council. The recommendations blend two very different projects which need to be separately reviewed and actioned. As such, at this instance, we ask that the councillors firstly reject point A of the recommendations, as there should be no concept of any staging that involves an unwarranted pavilion, to reject completely and finally, point B of the recommendations for any indoor training pavilion, and three, reject point C on the recommendation until it is set aside as a separate project. I'm talking about the facilities, toilet block and change rooms there. I'd like just to briefly talk to a few of the points, if I may. Firstly, we're strongly opposed to the indoor cricket facility. The revised plan is still a major issue. This plan still has a large incursion into the valuable community accessible green space. Council has seen a provision of quite spectacular facilities, for example, the wonderful environmental park in the central and eastern wards, the quite marvellous Malabar Headlands Walk for the southern precinct, all at a time when we are looking to remove open space for the western ward in an area where there is one park between Maruba Road and Zac Parade and Bunnerong Road. And so the revised indoor cricket pavilion would not meet any of our expectations. It would be a visual eyesore to be located in the centre of a prominent section of the park. It would be a visual eyesore to be located in the centre of the, a prominent section of the park. It blocks from every direction, uh, the quite lovely vista across the parkland. Um, you'll see a lost of mature trees based on what we're seeing as a, a rushed um revision of the um, of the pavilion's location. Um, it will see, uh, incursions into the green space and overshadow current grass areas. Randwick Petersham Cricket Club, um, lovely organisation, has however clearly been well supported by Randwick Council. I'm quoting from their annual report this year to twenty-twenty-five, where they say, and I quote, "We are, we again have control of Coogee, Kensington and Snake Park ovals." Whereas Petersham, in line within a West policy, is booked on a required basis. Hardly a fifty-fifty partnership, I wouldn't think. There are great alternatives, as the previous speaker, John, uh, mentioned, um, uh, that are far better over at Heffron Park.
With a one-minute extension.
Sure, thank you. Uh, currently though, uh, those facilities have been upgraded over there and it is a designated sporting precinct. Um, the survey, we, we believe, was significantly flawed. Um, I think that bundling the two elements together, um, uh, created a lot of confusion. It certainly did for me when I first read it. But let me say that with four hundred, or fewer than four hundred responses from the hundred and eighty thousand residents in fifty thousand dwellings in Randwick Council, this represents two, approximately two hundred people supporting it. The result shows a zero point zero zero two percent of people in favour of the overall plan. Council cannot give a precious green space and spend fourteen point five million dollars on a zero point zero zero two percent result. Um, we ask that the council tonight reject all three recommendations and pursue with full effect if consultation the amenities block upgrade as separately, uh, as a separate project. We also ask that the council completely remove the cricket pavilion from council's agenda now and in the future. Thanks very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there?
Any, uh, questions?
Are there any questions of the speaker? Mister Sid, councillor Sid.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, I have to ask again, no objections to the stage one with the amenities. I know you wanted to pull out.
Sure.
Voting in A, but the amenities and the change room combined according to the group.
If it's viewed as a separate project, properly, properly managed and funded, um, you'd have the full support of the, uh, Snake Park, um, Save Snake Park group.
Thank you.
For, for that stage.
Yeah, that's all.
But definitely not for the pavilion.
But the amenities and the change.
Amenities long overdue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? There being no further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now move to the next item, N M eighty-five slash twenty-five, notice of motion from councillor Wellington, protecting street trees where a development is approved under the provisions of a complying development certificate. Speaking for Frankie Sullivan from Canopy Keepers East. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Frankie Sullivan. I'm a Clavely resident, the vice-chair of Wise East Branch and a government lawyer. Uh, tonight, however, I am here addressing council in my capacity as one of the founding members of Canopy Keepers East. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to address councillor, uh, address council in support of councillor Wellington's notice of motion in that capacity. Canopy Keepers East is a recently formed branch of the community organisation Canopy Keepers, which was founded in Pittwater in twenty-twenty. Canopy Keepers East aims to preserve and enhance urban forest and canopy across Randwick, Wallara and Waverley L G As. Across these electorates, there is a growing number of environmentally minded residents who have expressed to us their concerns about the risk that development poses to canopy and urban forest, both on private and public land. It is in that context that councillor Wellington's notice of motion, motion provides a much welcome insight and initiative. Councillor Wellington's notice of motion identifies an anomaly in the regulatory framework that governs developments in New South Wales. The anomaly which councillor Wellington has identified and set out in detailed, detail in the background to the notice of motion effectively creates two distinct pathways for developmental works. One pathway, the D A pathway, acknowledges that street trees are an important part of the urban landscape that require protection from the equipment and disturbance that, that development entails. The other, the C D C pathway, is woefully and inexplicably silent when it comes to a public tree protection. Uh, the inconsistency between these two pathways, I believe, uh, could inevitably lead to community disappointment, confusion and enforcement challenges. Uh, we applaud councillor Wellington's efforts to bring this anomaly to your attention and to plot an immediate course of action. Canopy Keepers East urges you to vote in support of this notice of motion, which aligns with public statements previously made by Randwick Council about the importance of canopy and urban forest in this L G A and across the state. We note that this is a valuable opportunity for Randwick Council to be at the vanguard of important statutory reforms, which will positively, positively impact not just this local government area, but local government areas across the state. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? There being no questions of the speaker, thank you very much. We now move to N R three slash twenty-five, notice of precision motion submitted by councillors Martin, Hamilton and Burst, festoon lighting along Coogee Bay Road. Speaking for, uh, Mister Chris Court from the Coogee Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor, councillors and members of the community. My name is Chris Court and I'm speaking on behalf of the Coogee Chamber of Commerce. Uh, I wish to express our support for the installation of lighting along Coogee Bay Road from November through the Christmas period, uh, leading into the Coogee Nights programme. Firstly, we want to thank Randwick Council for its ongoing support of the chamber, our local businesses and the wider Coogee community. We deeply value the collaborative relationship we are building and recognise the significant efforts made to ensure Coogee remains a safe, vibrant and welcoming place. Why is this important for Randwick City Council? A thriving night time economy means more patrons to our cafes, restaurants and bars, which in turn supports local jobs and keeps our community vibrant. Our membership ranges from micro and small business and larger local enterprises. Collectively, they have shared consistent feedback that lighting directly and positively impacts trade during the night time economy. It draws, draws people into the precinct, encourages them to stay longer and most importantly supports local spending. For many businesses, this period is critical in sustaining trade into the new year and strengthening Coogee's emerging night time economy. Secondly, a trial allows council to measure the impact and gather feedback without a long-term commitment. You can consult with traders, residents and visitors, ensuring any concerns regarding its reintroduction are addressed. We believe that lighting transforms our streets into lively, inviting spaces and enhance visitor experience, create a sense of safety and encourages families, locals and tourists to enjoy Coogee after dark. Well-lit areas also act as a deterrent to antisocial behaviour, which some of our businesses have experienced, further enhancing community wellbeing and public confidence. The chamber regards festoon lighting as a smart and visible investment in future economic growth. It drives business activity, strengthens community connections and reinforces Coogee's reputation as a vibrant, inclusive precinct. It also provides council with an opportunity to demonstrate visible leadership and support for small business and to further build strong collaborative partnerships with our local business community. Lastly, it's a statement that Randwick Council is committed to supporting local business, attracting visitors and creating a lively, safe and welcoming environment for everyone. We respectfully encourage the council to endorse lighting as part of its economic development and place-making agenda. The chamber stands ready to work closely with you to ensure successful delivery and maximum community benefit. Thank you for your consideration and for your ongoing commitment to initiatives that enable our, our business community to thrive.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker?
Yes.
Councillor Martin.
Thank you. And thank you, uh, Mister Court for coming tonight and the other member from the chamber tonight. Um, uh, Mister Court, can I just ask you how long you've been a resident of Coogee, please?
Thirty-five years.
Thank you. And do you remember the last time when the festoon lights were last installed at Coogee around Covid times? And if so, what was your impression of them then?
Um, around Covid, it was a very dark time for everyone mentally. And just having the, the vibrancy of lighting in that section of our community just created everyone and gave them uplift. I thought it was absolutely fantastic.
Thank you. And do you recall if there was a community consultation that took place before those lights went up?
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you. How did you feel when the lights were removed and taken down?
Well, um, businesses have been going through a bit of a hard time in Coogee along that strip. And I think it's got a lot to do with the feel and the vibe of not having, uh, the lights to support our night, our burgeoning night time economy.
Thank you. And the last question, in your dealings with the Coogee businesses and residents, um, have you spoken to anyone that is not supportive of the festoon lights proceeding to be installed for a trial period?
No, no, I haven't.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mister Court. There being no further speakers. We will then move to items on the business paper. Thank you. Um, we commence with, uh, merrill minutes, M M twenty-seven slash twenty-five, financial assistance and donations. Um, councillors, I take the merrill minute as read. Are there any speakers? There being no speakers, I'll put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
Those against, declare that carried. We now move to the additional merrill minute, M M twenty-eight slash twenty-five, additional financial assistance and donations. Are there any speakers? I take the merrill minute as read. Are there any speakers? There being no speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
Those against, declare that carried. Okay, thank you. We now will move to, um, urgent business. Is there any urgent business?
Yes, I do have one.
Councillor, um, Rosenfeld, could you please outline what it is that you are seeking to?
Karen.
Karen. Councillor Rosenfeld, could you please outline what it is that you are seeking to have considered as, uh, urgent business?
I sent through to, uh, David Kelly a bit earlier, uh, the motion is titled condemn the kites for Palestine Beach Day event. And, uh, basically, um, we put up on the screen, uh, the, the motion will be that the council condemns in full the kites of Palestine Beach Day event planned for Sunday, October nineteenth at Maruba Beach. And council writes to the New South Wales Premier, New South Wales Police Minister and New South Wales Attorney General, asking him to disallow this event due to the disharmony it will cause in the community, especially considering the vast Jewish population in both Maruba and its surrounding suburbs. And the reason why this is urgent is the next council meeting is not till, uh, late October, I believe the twenty-eighth from memory. This event will take place on the nineteenth and, uh, and hence that's the reason for the, uh, for the urgency. Um, um, it, it, it's, uh, it'll cause great, uh, disharmony in the community. Uh, the Jewish community has only just found out the last couple of days that this is happening. And, uh, certainly, uh, uh, it's something that we don't want to see in our L G A. Doesn't, not something I don't want to see in, in the ward I represent and the ward Europe represent, Mister Mayor. And, uh, um, yep, we, uh, I'd like this to be looked at.
Uh, thank you. Just in relation to this, the first, what I would like to do is make a declaration of non-significant, non-procurnary interest as it relates to this potential urgent business, uh, in relation to point B. Um, I will, um, participate in the matter as this is outside of the scope of my professional responsibilities. Um, in relation to this particular urgent business, um, I'm concerned that this actually may constitute an unlawful motion by virtue of the advice provided, um, confidentially to councillors regarding the work, health and safety, um, obligations of council. Um, I, I, I won't go into the substance of that advice by virtue of the fact that it being, um, confidential. But what I will state is that the reason for it being confidential as it relates to personnel matters. Um, I do actually have a question for the general manager, having cited, um, this particular, um, uh, notice of motion noting that the intention of the advice is to prevent, um, motions of this sort. I'm just curious as to whether or not you would otherwise allow this as a lawful item on the business paper if it was submitted as a notice of motion.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. This, um, urgent business was submitted as a notice of motion, it would not be put on the business paper.
Um, in, in light of that particular advice, um, I will, um, consider that this is an unlawful motion and cannot be considered under, um, fifteen eleven C, that this is a, a motion, um, by virtue of urgent business that moves or attempts to move a motion or an amendment that has an unlawful purpose or that deals with a matter that is outside of the jurisdiction of council or the committee or addresses or attempts to address the council and committee on such a motion, amendment or matter. Um, as a result, um, I rule that that is, um, out of order and is an unlawful motion and cannot be put. Thank you. Um, there being no further business, um, we move to the election of the deputy mayor, um, so excuse me. Um, I will proceed through the recommendations A and B and then I will hand over to, uh, the general manager to conduct the deputy merrill election. Um, the first, uh, item is A, can I please have a mover of someone, um, of, uh, the motion? Um, councillor Veach, could you please outline, um, the term of office? Okay, thank you. Um, can I, can I also confirm, um, what form of voting? Okay, thank you. Ca-, um, councillor Veach has moved the form of open voting, um.
I didn't have, I didn't have the microphone on.
Oh, that's, that's all right. So just for the benefit of the, um, audience who may be listening online, um, councillor Veach has, uh, has moved a motion, uh, to elect the deputy ter-, uh, deputy mayor for a period of twelve months. Uh, and the second point of that is to determine the method of voting for the deputy mayor, um, uh, by, uh, open voting. Uh, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. I'll now hand over the chair.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. As a returning officer, I hereby call for nominations for the position of deputy mayor of Randwick City Council for the term September twenty, uh, twenty-five to until September twenty-twenty-six. I've received the following valid nominations for the office of deputy mayor. Received one from councillor Wellington, nominated, um, and also one from councillor Martin. Are there any further nominations? There are no further nominations. I declare nomination of the deputy merrill election closed. As there is more than two, uh, as there is more than one nomination for the office of deputy mayor, an election will be necessary and in accordance with the earlier council resolution of open voting, voting the election will be by a show of hands. The vote is to be taken in alphabetical order of candidates. I call for a show of hands for councillor Martin. I call for a show of hands for councillor Wellington. There are six votes for councillor Martin and nine votes for councillor Wellington. I declare that councillor Wellington is elected as deputy mayor for the term of September twenty-twenty-five to September twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you, um, Mister General Manager, and I offer my congratulations to councillor Wellington. Um, before I throw to speakers, I'd like to offer my congratulations and thanks to councillor Wilson um, for a very sterling term as deputy mayor. Um, for the last twelve months, I thought that you, um, executed your duties, um, with distinction. You were always, um, available to, um, to, to literally deputise at any point, sometimes with notice, sometimes without notice. Um, but I was very appreciative, um, uh, in, in all. But I was very appreciative in all instances. The feedback from the community is very strong. And I'm very impressed by your service over the last twelve months. Without giving favourites, I think that you've done a very good job over the last period. Councillor D'Souza is a speaker. Are there any other speakers? I've got a councillor Veitch, then Magna, then Rosenfeld. Councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I've known councillor Wilson for over twenty-five years, long before she became a councillor. She had her sons actually volunteer one year to collect on behalf of the Salvation Army. And we became friends since then. But coming back to what you said, Mr. Mayor, you are a very proactive mayor, and you're involved with everything. You're everywhere. I don't know how you do it, but you do it. But whenever the opportunity arose, councillor Wilson stepped up. She did a wonderful job. One in particular, I remember, was the morning tea for volunteers. Her speech was excellent. Her presentation was excellent. But you'd expect that. She is a barrister after all. But in saying that, what made her speech so moving was her personal touch. And she really spoke well. And I said to her after, I said, I haven't heard you speak much. She said, well, yeah. In council, but when you do, you make a difference. So councillor Wilson, thank you, Maria. Thank you for everything you've done. We have a common friend in Auntie Joy Ruby, your auntie, who was very, very fond of me. She's passed away. But she gave me lots of opportunities, and she was a very famous entertainer. But coming back to you, Maria, thank you. Thank you for everything you're doing. Thanks for standing up for our community, especially our indigenous people. I know you went to La Perouse School, I think. Yeah, and Matreville High. I was at the presentation with you the other day. So thank you. All these formative things makes a person. You've never forgotten your roots. You've never forgotten our people. And for that, I say thank you. Thank you very, very much, Maria.
Thank you very much. Councillor Magna. Councillor Magna.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I also want to say, Maria, sorry, councillor Wilson, that as a newly elected councillor, I very much appreciated your advice when I've sought it. But I've also been very appreciative of the way in which you've conducted yourself as a councillor and as a deputy mayor. No nonsense, getting straight down to business, very practical. You've given me good advice. You've been a good advocate for a community, and I think you've set a very high standard for those that follow as deputy mayor. And when Mayor Parker had to travel overseas, it was just a great sense of confidence that you were able to step up into the chair and carry out those functions. So confidently, and again with a practical approach that we've come to appreciate. And I do value your guidance, your wisdom, your insight, and also your friendship as a colleague and as a comrade. Your collegial approach in particular. Thanks, councillor Wilson.
Thank you. Councillor Veitch. No, no, I'll come back to. What I might do is I'll come back to councillor Wellington. So we'll go to councillor Veitch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to congratulate councillor Wellington, who is endorsed by the Greens Caucus and also the Randwick Botany Greens. Obviously, I would also like to thank councillor Wilson for her term over the last year. But congratulations, councillor Wellington. You've really stepped up over this past year and your first year as councillor. Worked very closely with your community, meeting with them regularly, at least twice a month, I believe. And you've been involved in some really important work, particularly in relation to saving that large fig tree up in Clavelli, which was probably a first for what I've known on council, to be able to save one of those street trees. It's really inappropriate to laugh, actually. I'm sorry.
Councillors?
But you don't have to.
Sorry, speakers will be heard in silence. Councillor Hamilton?
Sorry, point of order.
Councillor Hamilton?
Excuse me, point of order.
I hear the point of order, yes.
This is completely inappropriate statement. Can people, actually, every single meeting we hear, all councillors will be heard in silence. That is a point of order. I can be heard in silence while congratulating the new deputy mayor of whatever party.
Councillor Veitch, I thoroughly uphold your point of order. You are correct. The speaker should be held in, heard in silence. And I really want to emphasise that to all speakers. Councillor Hamilton? Thank you. Councillor Veitch, please continue. Councillor Hamilton, you're interjecting throughout the meeting when I'm ruling on a point of order. Councillor Hamilton, could you please stop? Thank you. Councillor Veitch.
So I'm very, very happy to support councillor Wellington in this new role. I think she will do a fantastic job. She's very concerned about everyone in the community. She's done some great work on environmental sustainability over her first year, and I'd like to warmly congratulate her. Thank you.
Thank you. What I will do is I'll actually combine the two debates in relation to that. Councillor Magna, if there was anything that you wanted to say in relation to councillor Wellington? Councillor Magna, please continue.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, as a newly elected councillor, I'm unfamiliar with the etiquette, but it was remiss of me not to take the opportunity to congratulate my North Ward colleague and friend, councillor Wellington, on her election as mayor, even though we compete for votes and come from different political parties. I've come to know councillor Wellington as a very diligent, thoughtful, hard-working advocate for her community. And I really admire her eco-centric advocacy for rights of nature, environmentalism, as well as the work that she does for our community. And I know that she's going to equip herself very well as deputy mayor and a leader in this community. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'll now go to councillor Rosenfeld.
It's one year now since we had the last merril and deputy merril election. Time has indeed gone quick, and before you know it, it'll be September twenty-twenty-six, and we'll have another merril and deputy merril election. As can be seen, all the Labour councillors around the room just voted for a deputy mayor from the Greens Party. In twelve months' time, will these same councillors vote for a Green mayor? The possibility of a Green mayor, or Greens mayor, sorry, returning is causing great anxiety in certain sections of the community, as all have seen and correspondents received. Let's hope that we don't have another Greens mayor.
Councillor Asgari.
I'd like also to express my gratitude for councillor Wilson's outstanding community service efforts. And I really enjoyed working with you. Your contribution to improving our community has not been unnoticed. And thank you for all your dedication and leadership. I also like to congratulate our new elected deputy mayor, councillor Wellington, and I wish her all the best in her new role and responsibility.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, thank you. Now, move on to the next item. Thank you. We now move to the appointment of delegates to committees, moved by councillor Magna. Councillor Magna, could you please outline what it is you're moving?
I'd like to move that the delegates be appointed to committees in accordance with the updated list. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the delegates be appointed to the committees in line with the updated list that you circulated earlier this evening for the avoidance of doubt. That is entitled proposed committee membership, bracket September twenty-twenty-five to September twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Veitch. Thank you. Councillor Magna, do you wish to speak to it?
No.
Okay. Councillor Veitch, do you wish to speak to it? I have a hand up from councillor Sed.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask the mover to announce what those changes have been?
There are no changes as far as I'm aware to the committee list.
Okay, Mr., yeah, sorry.
But there's a number of committees. It's there. If you've got a specific question.
Yeah, I do have a specific question because the proposal that we've got today is different to what we had in the business paper. And as far as I know, any changes to the business paper need to be declared or at least mentioned in amendment. And according to the business paper, councillor D'Souza is a delegate on the La Perouse Museum Headland Trust. And what we received this afternoon was that he's the chair representing the mayor on the La Perouse. That has been changed and has been mentioned to anybody.
Thank you.
As far as I know, Mr. Mayor, you can't change the business.
No, that's silly. I don't, it's a matter for you, Mr. Magnus. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, it can't be a statement. It's an actual fact of the rules. Is it being amended as such, and it needs to be announced, that councillor D'Souza is now representing the mayor, because it is a change? And has there been any other changes? Because the people who are listening and who do listen to the minutes will need to know the differences.
A question through you to the relevant officer or in fact directly to you, was this circulated to?
Point of order.
So I will hear a point of order.
Councillor Sed asked a question through to the mayor, and councillor Magnus stood up. So who is the mayor?
Oh, sorry. I thought you asked it to the mover of the.
Well, he asked the mover to announce, and the mover said there's no changes. So I said, there is a change, Mr. Mayor, you need to make a ruling. I'll put it to the general manager. Do we need to make announcements that there is changes to the actual business paper and what we receive and what we vote on? Because we're voting on something that no one knows has been.
So it's very hard to answer a question while somebody is talking in relation to it. As the chair, it is my prerogative to actually answer the question, particularly one which was initially directed to me. In relation to the changes, there is the inclusion of the Alwa Conference delegates, as is outlined in the new ones in relation to that. There is a swap in relation to the Greens delegations for the SS Rock, where councillor Veitch, yes, where councillor Veitch has removed herself and has substituted with councillor Asgari. The other change as it relates to this is a confirmation of the composition of the La Perouse Museum and Headland Trust. Councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza is continuing as the merril delegate in relation to that. Councillor Luxford is a delegate, and councillor Sed, yourself as a delegate. Those constitute the changes. Yet councillor Veitch?
And I think there was one more, which is a new committee, which is the Alwa.
Yes, I mentioned that first.
Okay, sorry.
Yes. And that's comprised of councillors Asgari, Hamilton, Luxford and myself, as is constituted. However, I will happily cede that to a female councillor if they so wish, but we don't need to do that in the meeting. Councillor Hay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll take a look at the lines for Bird Gully and Bunnery Road Committee and the Clavelli Flow Committee. You'll notice there's two councillors for Bird Gully and Bunnery Road, and there's three for the Clavelli. But in each of them, you're actually required to have four councillors. Is that an oversight we should fix now?
Committee membership is a matter for council, but I will ask the question to the general manager as to what the composition of that is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillor Hay. Councillors can resolve to have additional councillors on that committee.
Can I ask to be on the Bird Gully and Bunnery Road Committee?
To the mover of the motion, councillor Magna?
Yes, I accept the amendment. Thank you.
And councillor Burst on?
Bunnery Road and Sed, yes.
I'm sure your contribution will be welcome, councillor Burst.
Actually, there's no Green on that committee, and it covers West Ward as well.
Councillor Veitch's nomination or a Green for a Green nominee is also acceptable. Thank you. Are there any further speakers on the motion? Councillor Sed.
Question, Mr. Mayor, just for the sake of the minutes. So can I just ask, was it you that changed the councillor D'Souza from delegate to mayor representative? Just for the sake of the minutes.
Full clarity, Mr. Sed. Tension to detail is important, as it is clearly identified.
If you could just announce that you did make that change.
I have answered that question. Thank you very much, councillor Sed. Are there any further speakers?
Yeah, I didn't hear the answer to the question. You just said you answered that question, but councillor Sed asked if you made the change. Councillor D'Souza is no longer a delegate on the La Perouse Museum. He is now your representative. So a non-Labor councillor, an independent, former Labor councillor, but did stuff, is now a representative of you, the mayor. So the mayor's representative, not just a delegate.
As I previously mentioned, yes. Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, and I'll put the motion. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Okay, we now move to CP twenty-four slash twenty-five, minimum lot size for subdivision of a. Well, these are, well, no, we haven't started yet, and these are director of city planning ones, of which I believe a record of voting will be required. No, I will move to minimum lot size subdivision, and then the rest, not being planning matters, we'll do it in serio Adam. CP twenty-four slash twenty-five, do I have a mover? Moved councillor Gordon. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Asgari. Thank you. Councillor Gordon is the mover of the motion.
Thank you, just as per the business paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Asgari. Councillor Gordon, do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, yes, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad that this regulatory gap can finally be addressed. As a councillor with a bit of an outsized interest in planning, it is my objective to ensure that the planning system we have in Randwick is fair and balanced. And new planning regulations from the state government have essentially created an environment where the minimum lot size of a subdivision varies depending on the time in which you bought the property. And so this is obviously not an equitable system, and I'm glad we're looking at changing it. And I would like to thank the director of city planning and to all the council staff who put together this report. I look forward to the planning proposal being put on exhibition. Thank you.
Councillor Asgari is the seconder.
And as a beneficiary, because I live in one of these duplexes in Chifley, I'd like to summarise the benefits of converting the company titles to strata or torrent titles. And also thank the directors for putting this together and making it happen. So the benefits are that it's easier to sell because the strata torrent titles are more attractive to buyers, and it's also better access to finance. Banks are more willing to lend, often with better terms as well. And clearer ownership. You own your own unit, land or torrents, rather than sharing it with the, sharing it in a company. And it's more controlled. No need to board approval to lease, sell or renovate. And higher property value. Stratotaurus properties typically have a better value in the market and more legal frameworks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to thank everyone who's supporting my motion. Unfortunately, I can't get to talk to it, but I really do want to thank Planning Department. It's a really thorough project. And we've actually fought on this for years. We've had lots of opposition. There's a lot of people that will substantially be saved from sort of bankruptcy to failure. I really support it. It really, if you notice, it's just about everyone that it examples of are in the South Ward. And I think it's a very thorough and fantastic idea. That's why I thought of it. But unfortunately, again, I don't get a say in it.
Thank you, councillor Sed. Ah, councillor Burst. I'm sorry.
I'd just like to thank the planning director and the team. Um, I'd just like to thank, uh, the planning director and the team. Um, since coming on council my first term, the number one issue I've dealt with and the most people I've talked to is people about lot sizes. And about how we can, um, make it equitable, how to have basi- basically grandfathering in the process. And make it fair for people. Doesn't matter if you, you've, uh, done your dual occupancy in two thousand eighteen or twenty or twenty-one. Um, why should one person be able to do it, not the person next door if they've got roughly the same land size? So, um, to use common sense in the, in the, in the process now is fantastic. And certainly the people of, uh, Randwick will benefit and especially the South Ward, uh, people that, um, have constantly asked me for help. And, um, common sense has been the winner on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Gordon, would you like to close the debate?
No, thanks.
Thank you. I'll now put it, it being a, it, thank, thank, thank you, there being a planning matter, um, a record of voting is required. Um, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Okay, I declare that unanimous. Thank you. Um, I will now, uh, call for, um, uh, I will now call for, um, uh, challenges to items. I'm going down the list, um, CP twenty-five slash twenty-five variation to development standards. I, I don't think we do, no. No, no. Unchallenged. CP twenty-six slash twenty-five. Challenge by councillor Veach. CS forty-seven slash twenty-five, Lethal Street, Kensington. I actually saw a challenge from councillor Luxford. First, thank you. CS forty-eight slash twenty-five, Snake Park Community Consultation Outcomes, challenged by councillor Luxford. CS forty-nine's, CS forty-nine slash twenty-five, Maruba Surf Lifesaving Club, challenged by councillor Gordon. Thank you. CS fifty slash twenty-five, implementation of the twenty twenty-five authorisation and delegation instrument, challenged by councillor Magna. CS fifty-one slash twenty-five, assessment of the proposed alcohol-free zone Peninsula Village in Maturville. Challenged by councillor Sid. CC twenty-seven slash twenty-five, illumination of the Randwick Town Hall Community Consultation Outcomes. Unchallenged. CC twenty-eight slash twenty-five, challenged by councillor, I, I did hear councillor Rosenfield, um, councillor Rosenfield. Thank you. CO forty-eight slash twenty-five, proposed dedication of McGill Street, Randwick. Unchallenged. CO forty-nine slash twenty-five, monthly financial report for the thirty-first of August, twenty twenty-five. CO fifty slash twenty-five, monthly investment report. Else, well, you have to yell. Thank you, cause, cause I, see, CO fifty?
Uh, challenge, uh, C- CO forty-nine, best, twenty-five.
CO forty, CO. I'm sure you find yourself very funny. A CO forty-nine slash twenty-five monthly financial report is challenged by councillor Burst. CO fifty slash twenty-five monthly investment report. Unchallenged. CO fifty-one slash twenty-five, code of meeting practice. Unchallenged, thank you. Can I please have a mover of the unchallenged items? Challenge moved by councillor Burst, seconded by councillor Martin. Uh, all those in favour? Who's against? Declare that carried. Um, councillors, if you don't mind, we might. No, it's done. Oh, just sorry, my apologies. CP twenty-six slash twenty-five, challenged by councillor Veach. The chlorine, uh, liquefaction plant. CP twenty-six slash twenty-five, state significant development modification application to construct and operate a new chlorine liquefaction plant at Banks Meadow. Page forty-three for those. Thank you. Councillor Veach.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. I'll be moving this with a very slight amendment, which is not excluding anything on there. In the submission, which I believe is a very good sup- submission, but to just add another dot point to the recommendation that, uh, council include acknowledgement of community representations opposing the construction of this new plant at the site. Um, councillors, I've received quite a number of emails from, uh, residents in the area. Uh, they are extremely concerned about this proposal. Um, I believe that the, uh, pardon me, the staff submission covers most of the points, which is that this should not, uh, be a modified DA, but, uh, merits a completely new development application. It is highly toxic. The, since the, uh, ICI and Orica plant was first developed, there has been a significant increase in the residential population in that area. And based on, uh, Mister Ongilly's, uh, detailed report, we, we can see that due to the specific, uh, nature of, of this new, uh, proposal, it will in fact, and as well as the increased population, if there were to be an accident, there could be absolutely devastating consequences and it's likely to affect, uh, a large amount of people in that area. There's been concerns about the, uh, ICI and Orica plant going back now, uh, decades. And we've now got another fight on our hands. And so, yeah, I, I support the submission and hope council will support. Uh, just adding this little point noting the community concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Wellington is the second. Councillor Wellington, could you turn your microphone?
Yeah. That works better. Um, thank you. Um, I think the, and I'd like to thank the council staff for preparing a really comprehensive and excellent, um, um, report, uh, about this, or a letter to, um, state authorities about this. Um, and I think that it's such a, a, a large departure from, um, what has previously been done on the site that it really mu- must warrant a proper development application. And I, um, concur with everything that, that councillor Veach has said. Um, it's really a very concerning, um, proposal and, um, I think we should, um, adopt the, um, council officer's recommendation with, with councillor Veach's amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers. Councillor Veach, do you wish to close the debate? I'll now put it, all those in favour? Those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Um, councillors, I suggest we take a, um, five-minute break. Thank you.
Um, yeah, uh, the report is okay. There are some tweaks, I guess, that perhaps once we write our letters off to, uh, the various other stakeholders, that we can then move into, should we get support, move into, um, a more detailed study, a more detailed idea of how the modelling, et cetera, will work. But this is certainly a, um, a good way forward for the residents of Westward and the residents of Kensington in general, as the traffic has worsened along Lenthall Street. Um, and for anyone that lives around that way, it is impossible to get in and out of your streets at any time of the day. Weekends are terrible and week mornings and week afternoons, uh, are just a nightmare. Uh, the roundabouts are in place on Lenthall Street, which do help, but unfortunately the traffic coming in from Epsom Road just blocks the whole street entirely. So you can't even use the roundabouts to get out of, out of the streets. So this is a good way forward.
Thank you. councillor Hayes, the seconder.
Uh, ca- councillors, if there's anyone, um, feeling a bit unsure about which way to go on this motion, uh, all we're doing is asking, uh, for input and a position back from City of Sydney and from, uh, the state government. So it's worth sending this letter. It's worth at least trying and seeing what everyone says. And I urge everyone to vote yes.
Thank you. councillor Wellington.
I'd like to a- amend the report. Um, Mr Kelly has my amendment. And the amendment is, um,
Move to Wellington, second to each.
To delete A and B and replace it with, "That council receive and note the Lenthall Street investigation, StanTech final report."
Thank you. Um, councillor Wellington, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Um.
Oh, sorry, you are right. Councillor Luxford, do you accept it?
No, I do not.
I thought so. Councillor Wellington.
Um, I'd just like to draw councillors' attention to the conclusion of the report, um, that StanTech's professional opinion is that the proposed conversion of the Lenthall Street is likely to have adverse, adverse consequences on the surrounding area with negative impacts outweighing any potential benefits. The scheme is unlikely to gain wide stakeholder buy-in and is expected to face significant pushback from the public. And based on this determination, it is StanTech's professional opinion that the council does not proceed further with this investigation. Um, and I think that's how we should proceed. Thanks.
Thank you. councillor Veach is the secondary of the amendment.
Uh, I suppo- oh, thank you, Mr Mayor. I support the amendment. Um, I completely understand the sentiment. Uh, councillor Luxford originally put up the motion calling for this investigation, which was, uh, appropriate given the, uh, terrible, uh, traffic in this area. But given the, um, detailed report that we received, I think it will cause issues. It will make it, uh, difficult for some of the, uh, residents who live on that sort of southwestern end of Lenthall Street, close to where it becomes Epsom Road, to kind of move around that area. I don't know that they would support it. They won't be able to, uh, they'll be very di- they won't be able to get up to Todman other than by going all the way around via the city of Sydney. Uh, and I also note that, um, we actually get email, I've actually received emails from residents in other parts of Westford wanting their street to become one-way. And I just think it's going to be tricky when if this motion is supported, I, again, I, I, it's no dis- disrespect. I understand that there's a desire to try and address the traffic, uh, impact in this area, but it will be difficult to then go to other residents who've made requests, uh, and say, oh, well, we supported this one but not yours. So, and I don't know that we have the ability to go and get consultations, uh, expensive consultations for every resident who would like their street to become one-way because we know the increase in traffic throughout L G A is having impacts on residents all over the place. Uh, it's very, very difficult for people and many people want quite, uh, extensive changes made to restrict traffic through their street. So on that basis, out of, uh, I guess fairness to, uh, residents in other parts of Westward and probably other parts of the L G A, I don't think I support this amendment. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Um, councillor Hay?
Um, if I could, uh, reiterate what's actually been happening under the O A T M. Uh, the Eastern Avenue in the area north of, uh, Day Avenue is becau- is proposed to become not one-way, then in Lenth- Lenth Street, one-way. It's proposed to become a single entry, or a single entry or single exit. Uh, that's exactly what we're doing in, uh, Eastern Avenue. And it, there's theoretically, it, there's no reason it can't happen here. Um, if I can urge everyone to look through the motion as it is on the business paper. It says, "We write to both Transport for New South Wales and City of Sydney, and then should we receive that support, then we commence." So we're not actually doing any work beyond writing these letters, and we only commence and move forward if we get support from Transport for New South Wales and City of Sydney. I think it does us next no harm, just pushing through with what's in the business paper and going ahead for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any further speakers on the amendment? There being no further speakers on the amendment, I'll now put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
All those against?
No.
I declare the amendment lost. Okay, thank you. Uh, we now move back to the substantive debate. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Luxford, do you wish to close the debate?
No.
Thank you. I'll now put it. All those in favour?
No.
All those against?
No.
Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to C S forty-eight slash twenty-five, Snake Park Community Consultation Outcomes, challenged by councillor Luxford. Councillor Luxford, could you please outline what it is you're moving? I will then call for a seconder. Councillor Luxford.
Yeah, I'd like to move as per the business paper.
So I think this is a good way to go.
councillor Hayes the second.
Uh if I could briefly uh put out, I I had an amendment, um I've sent through to Mister Kelly, I'm certain uh councillors would accept. Um I'd like to remind everyone that. As we've currently voted, what we're actually doing now is we are deferring a decision on the cricket nets and training facility. Um and so I'm saying what will happen. Is that we are not voting to proceed with any construction on the cricket nets and facility indoor training facility. And council will have another vote on that uh in the uh prior to the twenty nine twenty twenty nine and thirty uh funding strategy. So if we wanted uh to support or not. Back to cricket nets, we will have an opportunity to do that once the final plans are drawn up and in a couple of years. Um we've effectively got a very long deferment right now and we're kicking it quite far down the road. No construction will start until the, uh even if everything goes according to plan, no construction will start till thirty one thirty two financial year. So effectively, uh I suggest we push forward um with recommendation mostly. And we get the amenities building done now and we accept the recommendation business paper, which is effectively to defer it for many years.
So councillor Hay has suggested a novel approach amending something as a seconder. However, um I will ask councillor Luxford if she accepts the proposed change and will move it in an amended fashion.
Yeah, I accept.
Okay, thank you, it gets incorporated in. Are there any further speakers councillor Rosenfeld?
Uh yeah, well, I um I I do agree uh with the amendment from my colleague and um. But the reason I wanna speak is because um I'm, you know, I'm excited about the fact that we're gonna update the amenities. I am concerned and I did ask a question in the briefing uh uh to the relevant officer about the bore water issues. Cause suddenly the bore water issues, um you know, that was the issue at first and now it it looks like we'll get through that. So I'm I'm hoping that, yeah, that we'll be we'll be able to wo- work through that with Sydney Water. Um and um and 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 we- we- work through those issues. Cause the the amenities badly need uh up upgrading. Um um Snape Park's obviously in West Ward, but a lot of Central Ward residents do visit there as well. So I do get a lot of correspondence from Central Ward uh residents uh who who visit there and 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 can keep harping on about the amenities needing upgrading. So so I really do hope that uh we can work through these bore water issues really quickly, as quick as possible and and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, ca- um so I had councillor Veach and then I'll go to councillor Sedd. Councillor Veach.
Um I've sent through an amendment to Mister Kelly.
Could you please outline what it is you're amending and then I will call for a second.
So it's keeping uh point one and then there's changes to the other points. So point two is calling for consideration of the proposed new location of the future replacement cricket nets. An indoor training facility pending further review. Um and point C is that we endorse the stage one amenity building concept design for consultation. Support the angle to curb parking as proposed on Percival and Snape Street. And consider further options for car parking, including informal on grass parking on game days, which will minimise the removal of trees and open space. And then D is the uh largely the same. So um. Councillors, uh the residents have spoken loud and clear, um. They a hundred percent want the uh amenities to be upgraded. But they have given a very, very clear message that they don't support uh. Consideration of the indoor cricket facility because of the large amount of open space. It will take away and just the visual and uh the loss of amenity that's gonna happen there. Uh Randwick Petersham Cricket Club, you know, the founding clubs of that club were Petersham, Randwick, Marrickville. And Petersham Marrickville, you know, it was largely uh an inner west uh club. And they have um use of the, you know. Stunning Coogee Oval, which is, there's probably nothing like it in the whole of Sydney or New South Wales. You know, a a cricket facility on that, on such an iconic beach. Uh as well as Kensington, uh Snape Park and also Marrickville Oval and Petersham Oval. They have five ovals. Uh some of these, I think Kensington goes back to nineteen twenty nine, others go back to nineteen thirty. So really for almost a century, we've had one particular sport who's had access to some of our most iconic parks. For a male only sport, which it continues to be with this club. They have a lot of space and but the local residents who use this park and walk their dogs. That is their one park that they go to and it's not just the residents uh who live in the immediate vicinity facing the park. It's actually residents throughout West Ward, particularly people with dogs. Because it's a designated uh dog walking park that are, you know, keen. So they're just asking deferral uh of of that item at this stage. So I really will hope, hope and uh the last point I will make is that council has some really high priority projects. That we need to get done. Uh probably the highest of all is the uh S E S building. The S E S current building has been uh having a lot of damage. Uh leaks from all of the, you know, massive downpours we've been having recently. Um that space is no longer fit for purpose. Council has resolved. You know, we've identified the location uh down, down uh in South Ward. And they have to be there within like by twenty thirty or so. We're gonna be applying for grants, but council needs to urgently allocate funds to the S E S. Who are out there on the front line, uh you know, all the terrible storms and what have you that we've been experiencing. They urgently need funding. That is the priority. And we've also got the Southern Suburbs Youth Facility. Uh which we've resolved to support, we wanna get that going and we've got the big stables and we've of course got the Maruba Surf Club. There are so many big projects that, I'm sorry. The the we've, the cricket is very, very well served by this council. And I don't know that that indoor cricket facility, which has never been identified in any of our um. Special rate variations uh is the priority at this stage. Maybe at some future stage. But uh not in the next five or probably even ten years. Certainly not before twenty thirty uh twenty thirty five. We ha- we have to finish the S E S. We have to finish the Southern Suburbs Youth Facility. Uh and we've also got the wonderful stable, big stables that uh local residents have have got a keen interest in. So I urge you, uh and even with the car parking, let me finish for one more second. It's really just considering this other option for the car parking. Get get a report back and uh the residents do want some parking there, but this is just one other option, which would actually save a lot of money and might be quite doable. Uh so I urge you to support the amendment, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Luxford is the mover of the original motion. Do you support or oppose councillor Veach's proposed amendment text? Okay, thank you. I'll now call for a second. Councillor Wellington is the second of the amendment.
Um just to uh su- support councillor Veach's amendment and also to acknowledge the um. Very um. Clear and thoughtful responses from the community. I think the community consultation report is incredibly um. Interesting and um engaging reading, which articulates um very strongly. How much the local community value their park, their green space and especially their trees. And so the lightest touch and the most um sensitive response to the community would seem to be. Um proceeding with the amenities and um the least amount of um car park intrusion as possible. And the least number of trees. Um I do note that the report also talks about replacement trees. And if we can start getting those trees in as soon as possible, that would be really great. Amendment to the amendment, thank you.
Thank you. So as we're debating the amendment, I had previously councillor Sedd on the substantive debate. Councillor Hamilton has put her hand up for the amendment debate. Am I correct in saying you didn't wish to participate in the amendment debate councillor Sedd? No, on the substantive debate, that's what I thought. Councillor Hamilton.
Um look, I don't think that this this amendment will get up, but I don't have a problem with it. I think that it's really reasonable. And the this, the funny thing is, this amendment won't get up because there's some people in the room that won't let it happen. Um but the residents have spoken quite loudly, I believe. And I think some of the points that councillor Veach made were very reasonable as well. The thing is, the amendment won't get up, but it'll probably run in this order anyway. So I support your amendment because I think it's fair and reasonable, but it will probably run in this order as well. It'll it'll end up, um you know, coming back around, they'll review where the 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 um indoor facilities will be. They'll reach out to the community again. I think that all those things will happen. It's just not um explicitly laid out in that way. But yeah, I think it's a good amendment.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers on the amendment? Councillor Gordon.
Thank you, just wh- while we're on the subject, I think I might address, um I first of all, I don't agree with deferring this. This project in the way that it's been outlined by councillor Veach. Um I think I'd just like to address um some of the things said by um. The councillor and members of the public regarding this project. Um I think it's important that um the community consultation did actually engage the entire community. It's important to note that uh Snape Park is located two hundred metres from council boundary with Bayside. That means there could be Bayside residents who use Snape Park every day. I think their concerns are valid. Um and their input on the community consultation matters and I think excluding the consultation just around the residence misses this important point. Um the other thing is that we've, Roundback Council have been um talking about uh indoor cricket nets since twenty twenty, I believe. Um it's been a long time coming. I don't think we need to defer this um project any longer. Um I'm confident that the um the changes to the staging will address the very valid concerns raised about tree canopy cover. Hopefully with the new arrangement, we can reduce the losses of tree canopy in the southwest corner of the park. So yes, in conclusion, I don't support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers on the amendment? There being no further speakers on the amendment, I'll now put it. All those in favour of the amendment, Veach, Wellington, please say aye. All those against? I declare the amendment lost. Okay, thank you. We now move back to the substantive debate councillor Sedd.
Mister Mayor, as I've spoken to this over the years, there's actually a few gaps in the timeline. This is actually was proposed in about two thousand and fifteen, before most of us were on council. Um the Maruba Lions were the users of the park, uh the heavy users of the park in those days. And then everyone agreed that the amenities needed to be updated. Um in two thousand and eighteen, they came and spoke at a council meeting. Um and we adopted it and we put it into Community Future and it was all about the amenities. In two thousand and nineteen, when I was the mayor, I stood there with all the stakeholders. Uh we were granted a million dollars to put towards the amenities and it was about to start that year. Then in two thousand and twenty, um it was proposed to put a hall inside the amenities. So there could be practice nets and they could actually practise for the, actually football club in uh when it was raining. Then all of a sudden, and we're not really sure when, it actually became a separate building. Um all I ask is, what I've been asked by the Maruba Lions since the beginning. Is that stage one, and I'm quite happy that stage one is now stage one again, it was gonna be changed to stage two. I'm just very excited that it's gone back to being stage one. I just do have one question that. We've been given a pretty good proposal, I know it's not the final drawing, but does it really need to go back to community consultation once again? I don't think it's gonna differ too much from the drawings that are here, cause I think more delays not needed. All we need to do is start it, as we've heard from both speakers. They're very keen to do it, the whole community wants it. Um I don't really base it on what Bayside residents think, they don't pay rates. But um I really do know that our residents and our sporting clubs and the people who just walk their dogs. And the people who just use the park really want new amenities, cause they are atrocious and that's all we want to happen. So the faster the better.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Boost.
Um I'd just like to make a correction. There will be a a girls' team playing next year. Last uh at the last sports meeting, um I spoke to all the presidents and I spoke to the cricket president. And um yes, they've got a a girls' team entered, so there will be girls' cricket played in Randwick. So they're just, uh their biggest problem was they didn't have enough uh enough fields to do that. So this will obviously enhance that. Thank you.
There being no further speakers, councillor Luxford, do you wish to close the debate? Okay, thank you. Now put it. All those in favour say aye. Those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to C S forty nine slash twenty five, Maruba Surf Life Saving Club redevelopment outcomes of community consultation. Moved by councillor Gordon. Councillor Gordon, could you please uh outline what is you're moving? I'll then call for a second.
As per the business paper.
Do I have a seconder? Seconder by councillor Luxford, councillor Gordon.
Uh thanks, Mister Mayor. I was happy to move to the the last motion on this item back in June. And I'm happy to be back here once again with a um plurality of the responses in the community consultation, supporting this project. Um as well as the thousands of members of the Maruba Surf Life Saving Club that lent their support as well to this project. We can finally move forward with our planning approval. And the Maruba Surf Life Saving Club is really a pillar of our community and the benefits of this project are clear. The building is over a century old, it's riddled with concrete cancer and it's not currently fit for purpose. So I do hope that council is united in supporting the clear wishes of our community and of the club to move this project forward. Thanks.
Councillor Luxford is the seconder. Thank you, councillor Rosenfeld.
Okay, I've got an amendment I sent through to David Kelly. And basically, um in my amendment, I'm keeping A, so yeah, happy to endorse the the design. Um however, I'm adding B and uh this is what I added in the last meeting that we discussed the Maruba Surf Club. Where that once the building is complete, ask the Maruba Surf Life Saving Club to consider and communicate general public access to the club on set day times, i.e. Sunday afternoon. So as I mentioned before, uh basically um the public uh have expressed to us that uh they uh. Uh given the.
Please, please continue. I understand, thank you, please continue.
Yeah, sure. Uh and and the public do, uh uh given the, given the amount of uh money that is going towards this project. The public express that they do want to have some public access, obviously, um eh like what South Maruba. Surf club do, it could happen once a week, once a fortnight, uh you know, um to 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 open the pu- uh the the club to the public. Obviously in certain areas of the club. So I'd I'd like to do an amendment to add add that. Um and um um and I I uh I I really think it'll 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 improve the um. The enjoyment of the of the surf club for the community. Uh and a lot of people have said to me, they actually want us to make a binding and I've said no. Uh I don't think we need to make a binding, we need to have a good communication with with the surf club and and just uh. Just to consider that uh that's what we 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 would like to happen. So, thank you.
Councillor Gordon is the mover of the.
I accept.
Thank you. Um. So, no, just just hold, hold on, thank you. So it it's now been incorporated in. We're on the substantive debate. I have a hand up from councillor Sedd and then I'll go to councillor Veach.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I just wanted to point out that actually councillor Gordon moved this and councillor Luxford last time. And point D, it must have been when you mentioned it last time, was accepted, so it's actually in the motion. I'm not saying take it away, but I'm saying it's already been done.
It it's, it it's fine, councillor Sedd, tha- thank you. Councillor Veach.
Uh thank you, yes, I support the amended uh motion. But I will also note that the Greens did actually ensure when this first came to council. That there would be uh community access included as part of that original council resolution. So in fact, it is mandated as it should be. Um and in fact, all of our surf clubs, you know, have the ability to have more access, to have live music on a Sunday afternoon. Or or, you know, on a Wednesday evening. Um they're amazing venues, they belong to our community. And there is definitely scope, we should be certainly getting our community members uh in there. And accessing at some of these off-peak times.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further, uh councillor Hamilton.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I concur. I think that it's great that we're building brand new buildings. And it's, they're much needed for all our surf clubs over the years. They, you know, bear the brunt of all the weather. So I think it's fantastic to be able to drop into a surf club. And I agree, like on a Sunday afternoon, it's great. Just drop into a surf club and see their amenities, see the the people that are there. And you actually see firsthand the action as well. So you see the surf lifesaver coming out, the ones that are handing over. Uh the ones that are, you know, right in the firing line of jelly stings and all kinds of stuff. So it's a good way for the community to connect with the work that they're doing. And it happens through their access to the clubs. And so, yeah, well done.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Gordon, do you wish to close the debate? Thank you. Well now, put it. All those in favour? Those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to C S fifty slash twenty five. Implementation of the delegation, of the authorisation and delegation instrument challenged by councillor Magna. Councillor Magna, could you please outline what is you're moving? I'll then call for a second.
In accordance with the business paper.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Wilson. Councillor Magna.
The um uh recommendation um is a positive development for removing roadblocks and bureaucracy. Recommended by Transport for New South Wales. Uh it streamlines decision making. Uh and while we've been well served by our local traffic committees in the past. I think it's a timely opportunity for us to modernise the consultation mechanisms and the decision making authority of council. Um I I'm excited by the fact that some minor technical matters that previously. Had to go through the traffic committee can now be routinely just signed off under delegation by the relevant council officers. So things like moving a pole for non-parking, which previously had to go through the traffic committee. Can now just be done administratively. So uh the um. At the same time, there will be consultation uh for genuine discussion of uh community concern. But there'll be a fourteen day time limit that will be set so that that will keep things moving along in a um expedited manner. Uh so I think those unnecessary barriers will be removed while maintaining. Uh appropriate professional standards for stakeholder consultation. And it will remove a layer of unnecessary bureaucracy from our, the administration of traffic. And it will entrust local councils to be making these decisions because we're in the best place to our our council offices. Uh and we're very well served at Bramberg City Council, will have that delegated authority to get on with the job um. In a timely way without unnecessary bureaucracy. So I'm excited for this uh reform. And happy that we're getting on the front foot and implementing the recommendation.
Thank you. Um uh the the seconder I had, it was councillor Wilson, actually, and then I'll go to councillor Veach. Councillor Wilson?
I reserve my right.
Councillor Veach.
Uh thank you, I just have a question through to the relevant officer. Um the the traffic committee, as it's run over many years, has sort of been uh run really quite effectively. You know, there's different uh representatives from Transport for New South Wales and different MPs and other authorities. And obviously council officers, um there's always been uh some councillors who've attended. But the the one thing that's worked well is that uh community members have also been able to come and speak in relation to. Different traffic uh items that affect uh that affect them, you know, it's often on their street or 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 quite nearby. And that input has been really invaluable and it's always operated on a consensus model. And uh it it it's just been a successful model. And I'm just going to ask, will that continue under this new form? Will members of the public and indeed coun- elected councillors able to attend and have that input for consideration of the committee?
Through to the director of city services.
Thank you, through yourself, Mister Mayor. Um councillor Veach, that's um correct. Members of the public still be able to attend um the forum. We will set in um a process that a uh member of the public can register for the forum, so we can make sure they have access and their item is listed on the um on the agenda.
Follow up question from councillor Lee.
And so just confirming that they won't just be able to attend as observers, they will be able to address the meeting and and a- ask questions and so on.
Through to the director of city services.
Thank you, through yourself, Mister Mayor, that's correct.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Rosenfeld.
I was just gonna say, I I agree with the development because I've always thought since I've been elected that council doesn't have enough, as much power in the in the traffic. Area um as as far as one of the four uh bodies voting. So this will give council a little bit more more power in that regard. So I've I've actually, I was uh, you know, quite pleased when I saw this. So I fu- yeah, fully agree uh with that, with these amendments.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, councillor Magna, do you wish to close the debate? Thank you, will now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to C S fifty one slash twenty five, assessment of the proposed alcohol free zone. Peninsula Village Matville, challenged by councillor Sedd. Councillor Sedd, could you please outline what it is you're moving? I'll then call for a second.
I'm moving as per the business paper.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Burst.
Mister Mayor, I'm moving as per the business paper, but I do have to say that I'm pretty disappointed that um in points A and B. That um we could not get the alcohol free zone at Peninsula. Cause during this time before this came to us, it was only last two weeks ago, that a worker in the uh pharmacy was assaulted. By a drunk person and also someone stabbed a lady who had to get taken by ambulance to the hospital. But um but we're being told that there's not enough crime to justify an alcohol free zone. So I'm moving it as per the business paper only because I believe in C and D, that they might proceed in another time. Oh sorry, not C, D and E, that they continue to monitor the area. And we, as South Ward councillors, we continually get uh people telling us about what's happening up there. What's happening, antisocial behaviour in our shopping centre, the um trail bikes, motorbikes, electric bikes that are causing mayhem. But unfortunately, as per always, um the South Ward has to live on a hope and a prayer and one day someone might listen to us. Thank you.
Councillor Boosters, thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, take it that you don't wish to reply. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to um C C twenty eight slash twenty five, a safer Randwick. City Community Safety Action Plan, challenged by councillor Rosenfeld. Councillor Rosenfeld, could you please outline what it is you're moving? I'll then call for a second.
I'm actually just speaking to it.
As per the business paper?
Um yeah, to the business paper, yeah.
Thank you, can I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Magna.
Yeah, so I just wanted to speak to it, that the uh um I read, I read the report, but the Jewish community does not feel safe overall. Due to the number of anti-Semitic incidents that have been increased over the past two years. The worst of this was the attack at the childcare centre next to Maruba synagogue earlier this year. However, there have been also several incidences of anti-Semitic graffiti, both reported to me and also reported to direct the council officers. The security assessment that I called for does help as a result and we do have extra C C T V at Jewish institutions. And I was happy to walk past one of them at Maruba synagogue today. However, there is still a feeling of of. Uh of of no- of of not having a lot of safety in the community. Now, apart from the Jewish issues, I just wanted to touch on um issues in in Central Ward. Um there have been much talked about increase in antisocial behaviour in South Maruba. And I acknowledge that council officers have met with the police to discuss how we can cooperate to improve this. That said, I haven't heard of any outcomes yet from this meeting. Antisocial behaviour is also still an issue in Maruba Junction. And we have made some changes recently to assist the police, however, more needs to be done in this area.
Thank you, councillor Magna.
Uh firstly, I'd like to thank the council officers and the team for their extensive work, you know, on the production of this excellent uh document. We were the beneficiary of some of the briefings along the journey, along the way. Uh there was great engagement. Uh it was a sort of a, look, read to me like a masterclass in um community engagement from all the research that was undertaken. Particularly targeting Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people, older residents, young people, people with disabilities. Women, families, L G B T Q I A plus communities and our other culturally diverse um neighbours. And then when they recognised that the surveys were skewed towards less diverse respondents in our community. They went out of their way. They went out of their way to adjust the, um, the community consultation process and went out to the community and listened. And I think that's, um, the kind of public service, uh, at its best. Um, the crime prevention aspects that councillor, uh, Rosenfeld has highlighted, um. Are important, um, and it recognises that safety is both, um, structural. Environmental and individual, uh, it ways in which everyone experiences community safety, um. But really what impressed me the most was how the, uh, council officers really went out of their way to listen. To diverse voices, um, and there are adjustments that have been made about active transport, about, um. E-bike and, uh, e-scooter safety campaigns, uh, about mental health, uh. Uh, rather than just supporting crisis and about the importance of community connections. And it's a ten-year timeframe which demonstrates our council's commitment to long-term sustained change. Um, it integrates with other council strategic plans, um. And it really represents the best, I think, of evidence-based decision-making. And I think this is a. Plan for a safer Randwick, uh, that we can all be very proud of. And I commend the council officers for their work. Thank you.
Thank you. A question from councillor Hamilton.
Um, yes, through to the relevant officer. I, I just heard councillor Magnus said. That community consultation was skewed against diverse groups. Is that the case? Is that what was happening?
Through to the director of community and culture?
Thank you. Through you, Mister Mayor. When we received the consultation, we, we acknowledged that the respondents were not necessarily diverse and representative. Which is why we held further targeted consultation.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, how, councillor Sedd?
Sorry, Mister Mayor, I just wanted, just to make it noted that, um, in a slight contradiction to our last amendment. That, uh, in youth disengagement, uh, this suburb by suburb. Uh, it's overall Randwick L G A is, is down compared to the Greater Sydney. And that's obviously when you take every, everything north of Franklin Street. Because the highest levels of disengagement are young people in La Perouse, eight point six, Chifely, seven point four, Matriable, seven percent, um. All we ask is that not only do we have crime prevention, but we do do more in these suburbs to help these children. And these young people, um, lead better lives.
Thank you. Councillor Rosenfeld to close the debate? Thank you. Um, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to C O forty nine slash twenty five. Monthly financial report for the thirty first of August, twenty twenty five, challenged by councillor Burst.
Another solid, uh, monthly financial report, but, uh, but my question here today, or the information I'm looking for is, um. We've had two let's chats, uh, we hold them each year in each ward to ensure the community has access to all fifteen councillors. For ward issues. Although South Ward residents will contact, uh, basically directly, directly three hundred sixty-five days of the year. The recent, uh, Mayor Parker mobile office. To the relevant officer, the CFO, um, is the Mayor Parker mobile office budget in the, in the monthly financial report? For the thirty first of August, two thousand and twenty five?
Through to.
The relevant officer, the CFO?
Through to Mister Wong.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. I'll take that one on those. Thank you.
And if, and thank you. And if that being the case, I've just got a follow-up question. So could we, um. Could, uh, you know, the council costs for the mayor's, um, uh, Parker mobile office day to, to pick cumbersome sort of thing? Um, could we get a breakdown of design of flyers, cor- uh, call fluke costs, advertising costs? The costs of flyers for Randwick would probably be approximately five K, I'd say. Um, letterbox drops, dropping of flies across Randwick, that would have to be a thirty K job. And, uh, one staff member at time and a half rates for Saturday. So, um, I'd like to get, um, I'd like to know how much that day has actually cost. Randwick council and our ratepayers when we do have two let's chats each year and we do have fifteen very competent councillors. That can answer questions for their wards. Um, so, um, it'd be, I'll be looking. I'll be listening with intent to hear back the results of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hamilton, a seconder. Are there any further speakers? Do, do you wish to speak, councillor? Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers. So now put it, all those in favour? Those against? Declare that carried. We now move to N M seventy nine, motions pursuant to notice. Notice of motion from councillor Haye reminding cyclists to use the Doncaster Avenue cycleway.
Uh, councillors, I'd like to invite everyone to, uh, pick up this, uh, report in pro- that should be on your desks. It was, it's a report compiled by local resident Mister, uh, Tony Chan. Uh, he has been. He has been, uh, photographing various incidents as they've happened. And looking at the safety of the cycleway, uh. And I, I lived on this street for a- approximately twelve years. It was a very boring suburban street and then, uh, what happened is the cycleway comes in. It takes out, uh, effectively a whole lane worth of space. And it n- very much narrows the street. And, uh, if you've all got the report in front of you, I invite you to turn to page eight, uh, item number eleven. Uh, you see the car that's actually being flipped upside down. Now, uh, it doesn't, it doesn't e- explain exactly, uh, why that's happened, but of course. Being a boring suburban street which didn't have very narrow roads, uh, this is a very novel experience to the residents. Um, but you can flip through the entire report. You'll see there's plenty of, uh, times when there have been, uh. Accidents, various signs being taken out, and the road itself has become dramatically more dangerous. And I also had. Another resident reached out to me, Mister Rick Reeset, uh, who said that there have been, uh, at least five incidents of mirrors being sideswiped. Um, in the street. Now, we must consider ourselves, uh, with all of this evidence. In front of us, we must stop and ask, what is the safest thing to do? The other thing to remember is that, of course, the previous state government instituted a safe pass law. Which means that if you're going past a cyclist, you have to give them one metre of space if you're going to drive around them. Now, you are actually allowed to drive, uh, to very quickly cross the centre line. However, I think that is a deep cause of a lot of the accidents that we've had. You see, because you don't have enough space to go around a bicycle without going into oncoming traffic. You will have, uh, a dramatically more dangerous street. And so I ask everyone to consider. Uh, this, I, I, I believe, uh, councillor Luxford was seconding, um, the, um. What we need to do is commission a safety audit to look at the safe pass law and say, can you do a safe pass of a bicycle? If they are on the road. If not, we should write to the Transport and Social Wales. And, uh, get, and transfer Mister John Graham and Miss Rose Jenny At- Atkinson and get them to look at the safety of this road. Also, um, there was some talk last week about, uh, not for a very young. Cyclist not wanting to ride, uh, next to adults. It, it, my friend and mentor, Mister Briscantley Smith, uh. Changed the law a while ago to make sure that if you're under sixteen, you can, uh, still cycle on the footpath. So if you have a very young child who you don't, doesn't want to be on the cycleway, they still can go on the footpath if they so wish. Now, um, also, there was some talk about the legality of signs at, uh, this is actually the, uh, I mentioned the wrong sign. Uh, you can put up signs even in the absence of, uh, an official law. You, you can say, you can prompt people. To use a cycleway without it actually being the law, which is precisely what, uh, City of Sydney have done at Taylor Square. Um, I urge everyone to support this motion.
Councillor Luxford is the seconder?
Um, yeah, it's, um, such a shame that such an awful amount of money. Has been spent on a cycleway which nobody is compelled to use. Um, and councillors around here tonight have talked about other, uh. Priorities for our council and things that, that need to be done, there's S E S building, et cetera, et cetera. Um, yet we have a cycleway which is not altogether. Um, safe for anybody, has created an unsafe road for pedestrians. For drivers, for cyclists, anybody who tries, who attempts to use the road. The people that are able to park on the road lose their mirrors, et cetera, on a regular basis. Um, you can't pass people on that road, uh, on the, the narrow end up. At, uh, towards Allison Road. Uh, it's become a nightmare. We have a resident who has a disabled parent. Who struggles to get that parent in and out of, out of her car and into the house. So, um, I support anything that will encourage cyclists. To use the cycle path and, um, yeah, that, for what it's been put there for. I must say, having had a recent trip to Greece, there was a beautiful cycle path. In a town called Hania in Crete. And I must say, there was not one bicycle to be seen anywhere. But the motorcycles and the scooters were having much enjoyment using the cycle lane. So, you know, maybe they'll use it instead here too, who knows?
Um, councillor Veach, and then I'll go to councillor Sedd.
Uh, thank you. I've sent an amendment through to Mister Kelly.
Could you please outline your amendment? I'll then call for a second.
I'll just wait for it to come up on the screen. Um, so councillors, I won't be supporting this motion. I will be putting forward this amendment. Because I've also received cor- correspondence from, uh, Mister Chan. None of these accidents are being caused by cyclists. Council has already put in an application to make this particular stretch of Doncaster Avenue forty kilo- uh, forty kilometre zone. And it's part of the L A T M for that area. But it still hasn't been reduced. We don't, council has, does not have the power. So it's actually now time for council, i.e. uh, i.e. uh, Mayor Parker. To request, uh, a direct meeting with the Minister for Transport. To raise all of the safety concerns that have been, uh, mentioned. Uh, to note that we've already applied for a forty kilometre zone in this area and a request that it be approved as soon as possible. And then request funding to complete the Kingsford Decentennial Park, uh, cycleway. And then refer all the other issues, refer the issue to the new, uh, Transport Forum. To consider what other options we can, uh, implement to improve safety for all users of this busy road. So councillors, yes, there have been some terrible car crashes. That is because cars. This road, this part of Doncaster Avenue is still sixty kilometres an hour. It's too fast. It should be forty, if not thirty. I try to avoid riding, uh, driving on Doncaster Avenue, particularly the section. Near, uh, the school, near Kensington Public School. You have to drive slowly to be safe. I don't think it's appropriate to be directing, directing, uh, fast. Uh, riders in pelotons or, uh, you know, younger cyclists who can ride very fast and are probably commuting. Onto a cycle path. When we do have pedestrians, as councillor Luxford mentioned, trying to access those, their cars. Do we actually want more very fast cyclists on the bike path? Where they may potentially endanger pedestrian, you know, pedestrians trying to access their cars. If cyclists are using the road from time to time and slowing down the traffic. That is actually in effect fixing the problem. You would be out of your mind as a motorist to try and overtake. A cyclist or another, or an oncoming vehicle, uh, in, anywhere in our L G A, let alone Doncaster Avenue. That is illegal, uh, is incredibly dangerous. And if people are speeding and trying to do that. That is just terrible motorist behaviour. It has not got anything to do with the bike path or cyclists. None of these accidents were caused by cyclists. So, I, 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 I understand councillor Haye's, uh, intent in trying and support the intent. Of the mover and seconder to improve safety in this area, but I don't think this motion is going to do it. Uh, unfortunately, because I don't think we're going to end up with a regulation that is going to just ban cyclists. It's, it's unenforceable. So I urge you to support my amendment, which is genuinely trying to address the safety issues. Uh, in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor Magna.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Fellow councillors, I'd rise to support, uh, councillor Veach's amendment. Uh, to councillor Haye's resolution, um. Cyclists have the same rights as other road users and there's no legal obligation to use. The cycleway, um, for good reason. They're not designed to be safe, direct, uh, uh. Or convenient as the roadway for some types of cyclists, uh. And the state government, the request to ask the state government to amend the law to force cyclists off the road. Would just be a step in the wrong direction. I think the approach that councillor Veach is proposing to. Address the, the safety issues, um, is the right course of action because. We shouldn't be about stripping away the rights of one group of vulnerable users. The, the solution really should be to. Improve safety. Secondly, um. All the great cities around the world are embracing active transport options, um. Cycling, uh, and, uh, active transport is a key component of active transport. Active transport is a, a key strategy for addressing, um, emissions. Uh, and climate change, uh, and promoting health and wellbeing, uh. And the City of Sydney is getting behind it. Our colleagues in, uh, Waverley Council are getting behind it. Uh, and Randwick is heading in the right direction by getting behind it too. The cycleway, uh, the statistics that councillor Haye has quoted actually doesn't take into account. The recently opened extension to the cycleway, which we can all be very proud and pleased about council, uh, supporting. To connect the Doncaster, which should see more cyclists, uh, utilizing the cycleway. Which should be a good thing because it'll be, mean that there's more trips to school. More trips to the shop, more trips to the university, more trips to work that are undertaken, um, on bike. Rather than people using, um, pollution emitting, uh. Climate change-driving, uh, motor vehicles. Uh, so let's look at the bigger picture. Let's look at the trends, uh, in which the, uh, great cities of the world are heading. And let's be a part of that here in Randwick Council by embracing cycling, uh, and active transport rather than punishing. Cyclists, uh, and can, creating confusing signals with unnecessary signage, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I had, I saw a hand up from councillor Sedd and then I think councillor Gordon and councillor Haye.
A question to the relevant officers, Mister Mayor, uh, how much that has this section of Doncaster cost? The state government and also council at the moment?
To the director of city services?
Thank you. Through yourself, uh, Mister Mayor councillor. So I'll have to come back to you on the exact figure.
Uh, about the councillor Haye, do you know the cost so far of Doncaster?
I did hear, uh, sixteen million as an estimate. Uh, I, I put through a question with notice to the council about a year ago. Uh, it was a, there were, it was a tw- two hundred and twenty million dollar budget that funded, I think it was eleven projects off the top of my head. So I was told off the record that it was sixteen million, but that could be incorrect.
To, to, we'll, we'll call it ten. So if it's ten million for Doncaster to go all the way from Houston to, and Bundock and et cetera. So we're talking over a hundred million, I suppose, on those figures. Um, and I just want to ask the movers, first and second mover, that. Do they understand the angst it calls to ratepayers and taxpayers to think that it's allowable to build? Bike paths at the cost of, we'll call it twenty million, thirty million, forty million, and you don't have to use it. Um, it just surprises me that, um, we don't want them to be used and we. Actually encourage people to ride on the road. Um, I think, as we said before. There's a lot of things in this L G A that really need to be helped, including potholes, everyday items. That I think the money could be well spent, um. Everyday items that I think the money could be well spent um and actually and as a mo- and as we've seen before. We took away the roundabout at Ascot Street and then we had to put it back in and it cost the council about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um we've taken the roundabouts away in Houston Road, we've been warned would be a disaster and it has caused a disaster. To get through those stopping signs, it is just a nightmare. Um and then the whole project got stopped. So there's nothing there now, there's no bike tracks and there's no uh roundabouts and we can't get through. So if we're gonna do this, we should do it properly. And actually, these accidents may not have been caused by bikes. But the reason why someone would tip over and all the rest of it is because they've actually must have hit the concrete barrier of the bike path. So the bike paths have some sort of uh and they have narrowed the street, so they have some actual cause of effect.
Um because you asked the mover of the amendment a question, I will op- I'll give council of each the opportunity to reply.
Uh yeah, I would like to reply, people in our city do ride bikes, many people do. They deserve safety to be safe, just as anyone else does. Because that same person is sometimes walking on a footpath, sometimes driving a car and sometimes riding a bike. So I guess what are you trying to say is that they only can be, we're only gonna look after their safety when they walk on a footpath or drive a car. But like God help you when you hop on a bike, because every, many people do all three. People aren't just exclusively riding around on a bike twenty four seven, they do all three. And the last thing I would say is that by that argument, there would be many streets where we would never even uh install a footpath. Because maybe it's such a quiet street that you might get one or two people walking on it any, every day if you're lucky. So that's just a waste of money to put a footpath. We've only got one big cycle path going for a couple of kilometres and then another one on Swansea Road. Like it's literally the only one and people are complaining about that. I really invite councillors to hop on a bike and try riding out there. You're not allowed to ride on the footpath for good reason. There's hardly any bike paths and literally every time you go out, you almost get killed. You actually almost get killed. Have a try and see how you like it and I'm sorry, most of them are people in the giant S U Vs. You've got plenty of space, but that's amount of space is not enough for them. So please for everyone who hates cyclists, support the bike paths where people are safely separated from the motor vehicle users. And from pedestrians, it's the future and it's the present.
Thank you, uh councillor Gordon and then I'll go to councillor Hay on the amendment.
Thank you Mister Mayor, I just thought the amendment moved by councillor Veatch. And look, we can, we can all agree that this is a tightly constrained roadway, I've had friends of mine who were cyclists note this to me. I think the wording of this amendment in particular is much more geared to finding solutions to this problem. I look uh full respect to councillor Hay, but I think the original motion does have the potential to be read like it could be attacking staff for their hard work. And in terms of looking for solutions, I do think it is valuable to seek advice from the new transport forum. Maybe looking to potentially lowering vehicle speeds, this could improve safety, reduce collisions. And help us continue to tackle climate change, which is of course aligned with council's long-term goals. I have also cited statistics um from council's integrated transport department. Um saying that the cycle lane on Doncaster Avenue does get used by commuters, so the lane usage actually varies by time of day. Commuters use the lane years during the peak hour rush, outside of that, the recreational riders typically don't, they ride on the roadway. I do appreciate the frustration felt by some people regarding these recreational riders. But as we build out our bicycle network, you'll see less of this type of rider and more bicycle commuters who just want a safe access from A to B. And I think this is why we should um continue with our active transport plan. And also for sharing stories about our travels to Europe, I have to say, I was recently in um the town of Utrecht in the Netherlands. Which has the world's second largest bicycle parking garage and Utrecht achieves such high rates of um cycling. By building out um safe, separated cycle routes for people to use, people do use them. Um and in such tightly constrained uh cities such as the centre of European towns. Um people find ways to get around safely without collisions, so thank you.
Thank you, uh councillor Hay on the amendment.
Um firstly, I would like to say that I do not accept the amendment. Um to the more recent speakers, I actually. I I am a regular cyclist and I use the cycleway. And promoting the use of the cycleway is the best way to promote cycling. Okay, now councillor Beach made three very strategic errors, which uh I would like to submit to everyone uh say that. She does not understand this issue in its comple- complexity. Firstly, she said this Doncaster Avenue is sixty kilometres an hour, it is not, it is fifty kilometres an hour. And it is uh forty kilometres an hour outside Kensington Public School during uh the relevant times. Secondly, she said it is not legal to overtake a cyclist. No, it actually is under the road rules and the safe pass rule. If you need to go around a cyclist, you are allowed to come into the opposite lane. So in into on into the lane that is oncoming traffic, that is the actual road rule. So you can uh go around a cyclist legally. She says it's not enforceable, all road rules are enforceable. Now, now, point of order.
I will hear the point of order.
Point of order, you did make a statement early in this meeting that councillors will be heard in silence and we just heard an outburst from councillor Veatch.
Ca- 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 councillors, just before we all jump off. If there's one thing I've been consistent on is that all councillors will be heard in silence. All, councillor Hay, please continue.
Okay, now, uh nobody is blaming the cyclists. Uh okay, we are saying the bicycle uh lane has narrowed the roadway. Now, even if it is the case that not a single cyclist has caused an accident. When you look at accidents like number eight, if cars are flipping over in the street. It is dramatically more likely that a cyclist will get caught up in that if they are on the roadway. We are trying to protect the cyclists by getting them out of the very, very dangerous roadway. Now, uh again, as I I ride my bicycle um most days. Uh when I'm needed in the city for work. And I am the most avid cyclist here, I believe, and I am. Yes, yes, I am.
Please continue, thank you. Well, you're not helping Bill, please continue.
And finally, there is uh a sort of a social licence here. That if you're going to spend a ridiculous sum of money on a bicycle pathway, uh then you need to use it. There is something that is very compelling at we have made the street dramatically more dangerous and that we need to promote cycling. And we need to get people using the cycleway. I urge everyone to uh not support the amendment and support my motion as on the business paper.
Thank you, councillor Hamilton.
Yeah, I just wanted to clear something up. Uh a comment was made that the problem that we're seeing in these accidents are all big S U Vs. You look at the photos, uh that's a little sedan on its roof. That's the sedan that's hitting another sedan and but it also sideswiped a sedan on the way to hitting it, a number twelve. Number eleven is a sedan on its roof. Um and then we go through to number fifteen.
So so I will hear the point of order, councillor.
I'd just like to correct, I said when I ride on the road, it is most, I wasn't referring to these accidents. I was referring to the people who try to sideswipe you.
Th- thank you, councillor Veatch, a point of order needs to relate to the code of meeting practice. It it is an ability to engage in substantive debate in relation to it, so I don't believe there's a point of order. Councillor Hamilton, please continue.
Yes, thank you. Um and number sixteen is a cute little van with a, you know, tray in it. And a um very long produ- protruding um ladder across the top of this little van, probably illegal. Uh because of how far it sticks out and there's no red flag hanging off the end of it. And so I believe that these images of the accidents of all these sedans. Hitting and flipping and running up gutters and all kinds of stuff. I really believe that they pu- they uh are evidence of a really strong argument for what councillor Hayes trying to do. And that is really to keep the cyclists safe. So if cyclists were anywhere near any of the, one of these car accidents. We would be right now talking about potential deaths. We've seen cycle cyclists die on our roads, it does happen and it is extremely upsetting and traumatic. We had a a Liberal member die uh many years ago and that was absolutely shocking to all of our community. And it was a terrible accident and they were riding on the road and he was run over and it's just, it's, it is terrible. Um he was engaged to be married. So and we've seen many accidents and could we avoid them? Yes, we should do everything we possibly can to try to avoid people being hit by cars, people dying on the roads. We should be doing everything we possibly can. So I think that we should consider um what councillor Hay is suggesting here. And see if that we can get some traction on this. Because it seems to me that people are ignoring the fact that the the road has uh become quite tight. Lots of people have reached out, I had someone approach me and talk to me direct about this and talk about the fact that they watch daily cars. Riding the gutter because they're trying to navigate around them. And we're not talking about big S U Vs, we're talking about sedans, we're talking about regular cars just out there on the roads.
Thank you, councillor Burst.
Cycleways are like two flags, people should cycle within those two flags. If you go down to the beach, and even our learned mayor here is a surf lifesaver, if you go down to the beach, where do you swim? You swim between the flags because it's the safest spot to swim, the same with cyclists. If they wanna be safe, the safest spot for cyclists is to be on the cycle lanes. It's a fairly simple thing, cycle lanes for cyclists, swimming between the flags to keep you safe at the beach. Swing between the the flags of a cycleway to keep you safe, thank you.
Thank you, are there any further speakers on the amendment? There being no further speakers on the amendment, I'll now put it, all those in favour say aye. Those against? I declare it, there's been a request for a division from councillors uh Veatch and Wellington, all those in favour, please raise your hand. We have councillors Wellington, Magna, Veatch, Gordon, Asgari, Wilson, Sid, D'Souza. And the mayor, all those against, please raise your hand. You have councillor Hamilton, Hay, Luxford, Rosenfeld, Martin, Burst. Yeah, that's everyone, I declare it carried. Okay, councillor. Uh councillor Hay, as, are there any further speakers on the motion as amended now? Okay, there being no further speakers, councillor Hay is the mover of the original motion, would you like to speak to it in reply?
Sorry, if if Mister Kelly does roll back up for a second. Uh look, this is better than nothing, but um so yeah, why not support it? But no, look, we we lost a huge opportunity here uh to do what's right for our cyclists. And frankly, this is, I I don't think this is anywhere near enough, but I lost, I lost my original motion, but this is better than nothing. So let's get this through.
All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you, we now move to N M eighty slash twenty five, notice of motion from councillor Burst investigating a park gym at Rabaul Reserve, Matreville. Could you please outline what is your moving, I'll then call for a seconder?
Um I'm I'm moving it as per my notice of motion, but I'd like to uh go through some background.
Okay, moved councillor um Burst, seconded councillor Mar- councillor Martin, put her hand up, councillor Martin.
Um community feedback is that the residents would like a park gym at Rabaul Reserve Matreville. This is uh, this park is located at uh on Posiers Avenue, just uh west of Anzac Parade. Um there's presently uh Childers Playground in this park. And to enhance this park to be a truly family location. A park gym would enhance the use of this amenity and help with the focus on family, health and fitness. Um this park is also bordered by social housing. This is an uh, this uh, this is an opportunity uh to have a free outdoor gym in that area. Um the feedback I've got, I got calls uh just recently after the success of um of the Wumba Reserve Outdoor Gym. Um hi Bill, I hear you're the gym guy, can we get an outdoor gym in our area? And I said, yep, not a problem, I'll I'll put it up and we'll see what happens. Um so it's um, yes. And this and this whole area of Rabaul Street, it's um if you look back at that whole area, it's all uh built in uh, was built. Um in World War, after World War One to bring back returned soldiers and so on. And Re- Rabaul uh Reserve was named after Rabaul. On which on the eleventh of September nineteen fourteen was a site of the Battle of Bitter Packer. And was fought south of uh Gabarool on the island of New Britain. So there's a bit of history there as well, uh returned servicemen now, it's, there's social housing in it area and we should support them. Um this is an opportunity for people to get fit, healthy and have a free outdoor gym to be able to use locally. So um I hope you'll support this motion um and thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Martin is the seconder, you don't wish to speak to it, thank you, councillor D'Souza.
Thank you Mister Mayor. Mister Mayor, I think you're aware of my core values, equity, social justice and a fair go for all. Uh I've heard of Bob the Builder, I've heard of Larry the Lifesaver, now we've got Bill the Gym King. Now in saying that, Mister Mayor, I fully agree with what he's suggesting because you're right. It is an area where there's a lot of social housing. It is an area where health is important. Now, I commend you and the council, I was at the opening of the Womera Reserve Gym and I could see the positive effect. And the positive comments we got and I thank council for doing it. It's all right to make suggestions and I appreciate that, but at the end of the day, you need to have money, you've got to have ability and you've got to have a team. And that's what you presented us with Mister Mayor, but coming back to this one. So we've got social housing, we've got uh, it is a war area, it used to be a soldier settlement. So that's important, but mostly after Covid, we realised that loneliness is a problem. People don't have opportunities to to, the social structures didn't exist. We needed to create an environment to build that sense of community we're so proud of in Randwick City. And that's why Mister Mayor, I think it's a wonderful opportunity to do just that. Build a gym which brings the community together, that motivates people to look after their health. And more importantly, it gives the youth of our area an opportunity to 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 get involved. To socialise, to turn away from other things which may not be socially acceptable. So I support it, I think it's important and yes, Bill the Gym King is right on this occasion. These gyms are making a difference and I thank council for funding him. I thank the director of city services for looking into the, to these projects. But most importantly, I thank the community for for embracing these new gyms. And uh building that sense of community we're so proud of in Randwick City, thank you Mister Mayor.
Thank you, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Burst, you wish to close the debate? Okay, now put it all those in favour? Those against? Declare that carried. Thank you, we now move to N M eighty one slash twenty five, notice of motion from councillor Rosenfeld. Curb and gutter on Roby Street, Maruba, moved by councillor Rosenfeld, you outline what is your move, I'll then call for a seconder?
Uh just uh simply as per the business paper.
Thank you, do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Hamilton.
Uh yeah, but basically, as you can see in the photos, provide some photos because I'm not, I I am the only uh councillor here. That lives in the central ward, including the other two other central ward councillors. So people who don't live in the beautiful southern Maruba, I'll take some photos so you can see the issue we have here uh. Um in in Roby Street, um uh between Wy Street and and O'Sullivan Avenue. Uh where there's cur- uh there's basically curb and guttering missing and I've had some complaints from residents on that. And especially when there's heavy rains, it's an issue. So when I took these photographs, it was the week before last when we had a couple of days of the extremely heavy rains. And as you can see there, that thi- this was a few hours after, but there was uh still water gathering there. So um it's it's quite a, quite a hazard in the area. Um and really, um rate payers deserve curb and guttering outside their houses everywhere. So I'm al- I'm quite surprised when I had the complaint that there isn't in this, in this small section, it is only a small section. So um all I'm doing is asking for a feasibility report into it um and I ask for your support.
Thank you, uh councillor Hamilton, is the seconder?
I just wanna commend um councillor Rosenfeld and and just.
I just wanna commend um councillor Rosenfeld and, and just, you know, shout out to councillor Burst and councillor Hay as well because. Liberals are putting up some excellent motions that look after residents, safety, streets and all the rest of it. Um, which is more than I can say for oth- for others. So, yeah, well done. Good on you.
Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, now put it, all those in favour? Those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to N M eighty two slash twenty five. Notice of motion from councillor. Veitch expressing condolences for Kim Rosen.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, look, I'd just like to acknowledge the very uh sad passing of uh Kim Rosen. Who is very well known to many people in our community. She passed away uh. Earlier this month, um, after a, a battle with, with cancer. Um, look, as, as noted in, in this motion, which was drafted with the support of her family. You know, she made really significant contributions to sport in our L G A, notably gymnastics. She had been an Olympic judge uh. For gymnastics, which is an incredible achievement, but, but most of all, she is known by so many for founding. Uh, the Banarong Gymnastics, which was in our L G A for, I think, around forty years. Um, building it up from scratch with her sister into what is uh. Now a vibrant and incredibly popular gymnastics club, though sadly no longer. Uh, in our L G A. So, um, we became uh quite close. When we were trying to fight for Banarong Gymnastics. Uh, to stay and to have um a larger uh premises at Heffron. Um, Kim always tried very hard to find a compromised position. You know, she was always trying to work to find. An angle that would work for, for everyone, you know, uh. Just trying to find some, some way through without being adversarial or confrontational. We, we weren't able to get there. But um, she was really, uh, had, you know, was, was so involved. Uh, made such a contribution and I really felt it was fitting to, to know and acknowledge. Her passing as an eminent member of our community and I. And I guess the mayor will ask for the minutes.
Yes, at the conclusion, councillor Asgari is the seconder. I've got a councillor Asgari and then I've got a councillor. Councillor D'Souza.
Mister Mayor, when I was the mayor of Randwick, I made a promise to a group of athletes. That a new gymnastics facility would be built for them, so that they could reach their full potential. That promise never came to fruition. Kim Rosen and her group made sacrifices. Over thirty years holding on to a promise that Randwick City Council would one day build a better. More functional centre to nurture our gymnastics talent. And continue to allow gymnasts to fulfil their Olympic dreams. These dreams, Mister Mayor, were shattered. The roof came tumbling down as the council of the day decided to privatise a public space. Which was run by volunteers for the benefit and good of the community. Kim Rosen and her gymnastics group were very disappointed. Kim Rosen told me, to be a successful gymnast Noel, as you, you need to have courage. Character and conviction. If only the council showed the same courage, character and conviction on this matter at the time. We would still be an integral part of the new Heffron Park Plan of Management. I know Kim Rosen was very angry and devastated. With the council's decision on the Banarong Road Gymnastics Centre. Thank you, councillor Veitch for bringing this motion up. Rest in peace, Kim. You're a champion for our community. You will always be remembered for putting gymnastics and the youth of the area front and centre. Of your community agenda. Thank you, Mister.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, councillor Sid.
I also would like to pay my respects to Kim Rosen. She was, did have a tenacity to fight for her causes. And as mayor, when the Heffron Centre was going up, um, I just wanna correct councillor D'Souza. It didn't become a private entity, it's owned by the council and we do rent it out and it's a council asset. Um, and we didn't give it away to private enterprise. Um, and I do note that he did fight with her. That's why he voted against the Heffron Centre. But having said all that. There was many a times that she did stick up for her people at the Bonneron Gymnastics. And she did it with a lot of tenacity, as I said, and as mayor, we had many meetings about moving it. And I do wanna mention that we did help out, the council did help out. In every way when it moved out to Rosebury and it's now very successful at Rosebury. And we did everything in our power to help move for everything, to move the equipment. And it's now onwards and upwards for there, but I do wanna pay my respects to Kim because she was passionate about her cause.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Veitch, do you wish to close the debate? Can I now put it? All those in favour? Those against? Declare that carried. Councillors, we will hold a one minute silence. Thank you, councillors. We now, we now move to N M eighty three slash twenty five. Notice of motion from councillor Veitch. Motion for the twenty twenty five Local Government Conference protecting communities from the impact of PFAS contamination. Moved by councillor Veitch.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Look, councillors, I will take this as read. Uh, I'm sure you'll all be aware that um, there's been a parliamentary inquiry into this issue. Uh, the committee had members of the Labour Party, the Liberal Party, the Greens and also independents. Uh, so I believe uh that the report represents uh the views of. You know, of all parties. Uh, much of the report relates to specific instances of contamination. That have uh affected communities in particular locations around New South Wales. Uh, and, you know, to speak broadly, the report is recommending. You know, further testing, further notifications, further regulation. Uh, and obviously to completely minimise, if not eradicate, future contamination and support for. Communities affected. Um. We know from, uh, I put up a motion earlier this year uh about. The fact that there have been a number of reports never released onto significant PFAS communication, uh pollution. Contamination uh in Cabaye Botany Bay from the firefighting foam used for uh the drills, firefighting drills. At uh the airport, uh from pictures that were released in the paper. You know, these aren't just for hoses, these are literally like if you've ever seen pictures of a water cannon. Uh, it's something like that. It is just gallons and gallons uh. Happening on a, on an extremely regular basis. It doesn't happen anymore, so. We just don't really know the extent of the PFAS runoff into our area. What we do know. Is that there is a huge amount of people in the Laperoo's and Southwater area uh who have passed away from cancer. Uh, and obviously we've got the big chemical factory and so on, which no doubt played a part, but um. PFAS contamination cannot be ruled out. Um, and we have a local uh. Greens member who grew up in the Rec Bay community. Again, we know that there's strong connections between. Uh, the Laperoo's Aboriginal community and those communities in the, along the south coast and at Rec Bay. Uh, and, you know, that, that individual's, you know. Community has been decimated uh by cancer caused from PFAS uh contamination. So this is an issue that affects many people in our community. We have um a report that's, and we know also that uh. Members of our community also made submissions to this uh inquiry. So I really hope, councillors, that you will support this uh motion to go to conference. It is simply endorsing uh the report that has come out of Parliament. Uh, the cro- uh with, which represents uh. M Ps from right across the political spectrum and I hope you will support it. Thank you.
Seconded by councillor Sid. Councillor Sid, do you wish to speak to it?
Uh, Mister Mayor, I've seconded this because I've seconded similar motions about PFAS before. And I feel quite strongly in, as uh councillor Veitch said, um, coming from. A family that my parents worked at I C I, my uncles, my cousins, uh, they've all passed away with cancer. Um, luckily, I'm the only one who never worked there. Um, and I know of our friends and families. Uh, that have worked there and have passed away. So Matreville has, um, unfortunately paid the price. For what I C I has got within the past and unfortunately we've never been able to get much further um with our claims. Um, there were lots of people fighting hard and I can't think of the name now from Bayside, um. Um, that's passed away, but I really congratulate councillor Veitch for being in this and we really do need to start studying and really do need to know. I think everyone just sees our area and thinks it's pristine, clean. They look at what it is now and no one has a clue what it was like. And everyone uh in the fifties and the sixties and the seventies. And if they ever see why there's cleaning out the bores in Bayside along Fourshore Road, which will probably be going for the next hundred years. We, um, we're talking to people at uh councillor Burst and I at the Matreville Precinct meeting. And they've acknowledged that there's nothing can be built on that apart from maybe some warehouses. There's nothing they can do about the contamination. There's a mercury pit uh right next to where the chlorine is. And they can't do anything with it and it's gonna sit there for the rest of probably the next hundred years. The uh, the good thing is the P V. Vs, the most deadly chemical that the world's going to, I think Belgium. So that's one win we've had. So I do uh admire you and I praise you for this. Thank you.
There any further speakers?
Um, yes. So the Australian government under the Liberal Party endorsed the council's, other country's first PFAS. National Environmental Management Plan in January twenty eighteen. The Liberal governments, both federally and state, especially in New South Wales, work tirelessly with environmental, defence, private. Public departments to secure their commitment to following the guidelines on identification and remediation of PFAS contaminants. If this notice of motion is suggesting that the Labor State Government are not doing enough, then I'll vote for it. Is this what you're saying? The Labor State Government are not doing enough, so we need to push them to do more?
Sorry, uh.
Question through to the mover.
Um, simp- it was a cross-party inquiry and so it only came out like literally. Last week. It came out literally like the, a couple of day, like the Friday before the deadline for motions. So uh there hasn't probably been an opportunity for the government to respond yet. But I think this is a really good opportunity with the Local Government Conference coming up for the conference, which. Obviously has delegates from all across New South Wales to send a very strong message. To take this seriously and to implement the recommendations.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Veitch, do you wish to close the debate? Can I now put it? All those in favour? Those against? Declare that carried. Thank you.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to move a procedural motion because it is getting quite late and as we know, we, we'd like people to be able to drive home safely. Uh, that uh we move to two-minute speeches, um, from now on.
It being a procedural motion, I'll then put it a misseconded by councillor Hamilton. Uh, all those in favour? All those against? I declare that carried. Thank you. Um, are there, eh, can we now move to? Yeah, N M eighty four slash twenty five. Notice of motion, councillor Veitch. Motion for the twenty twenty five Local Government Conference Early Childhood Education Reforms. Move councillor Veitch, I'll then call for a seconder.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Look, I will take this as read. Uh. Every single one of us has seen the absolutely appalling, uh incomprehensible. Reports coming out of the abuse of uh young children in early childhood, uh early childhood. Uh, educational settings. It's notable that these have been uh. For-profit organisations, which has uh impacted the ability to uh meet staff ratios. And the other um benchmarks. That are essential for the safety and welfare of young children. Uh, many parents are now actually removing their kids from um, from these centres. I haven't yet heard of any report of a public or council uh. Run centre that's been uh impacted by this. Our council-run uh childcare centres are. Highly sought after and highly regarded by our community. And they should, you know, the state government and federal government should be uh funding councils. To run these centres, uh just as we have uh public schools. It should be the same. We need funding to, to do this. Councils can't do it on their own. Uh, we need to ensure that staff are paid wages commensurate with the level of education and responsibility. That's required to look after the most vulnerable young members of our community, who are also our constituents. Even though they can't vote, our children, uh council does have a duty of care as well for all of our residents. Including the, the very youngest. We should be looking after their interests. So I hope you can support this motion. Uh, which is to go to L G New South Wales to advocate on our behalf.
Thank you. Seconded councillor Asgari.
I support this to be sent to L G N S W. I put a motion in April asking. To send a letter to Prime Minister, a minister for childcare. So we received. A report that in August, a letter has been sent from Mister Mayor and we are waiting for the report. So it's good to be investigated again and raised in the L G N S W conference. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, councillor Hay?
Um, councillors, I, I can't support this motion. Um, if you recall, uh. Just earlier this year, councillor Asgari put up a motion, uh, talking about the importance of uh. Safety and care and I was proud to support that motion. And so some of this is fine, uh, but. Point seven and eight are particularly uh bad. Uh. Firstly, allocating a hundred percent of smart and skilled funding to take New South Wales, there's no uh question of whether or not. Uh, Tafney South West has the capacity, the ability to do that and I don't think we should be automatically writing off every single. Uh, pu- uh, public school, uh, sorry, uh, every private training institution. And, but of course, number eight is even worse, rent controls upon landlords. Now. Whenever you institute rent controls, that means that uh basically you're punishing the landlords. Who rented out a facility to the existing childcare space. There, you're, you're not allowed to raise the rent on a cha- childcare centre. Now that sounds good until you realise. That no landlord ever again would ever rent out a space to a childcare centre. So you're going to force, you're going to uh force a freeze on the total number of childcare spaces by supporting this motion. Now, we've also uh already uh put this to, uh. This is also already put to the uh state, to the, I'll go to, uh, to the, to the federal uh. Local government uh body. We got a response back uh from the. Uh, Anne Ali, the Minister for Early Childhood Education, saying that there was. Uh, they were doing a comprehensive review anyway, so I don't think this is going to uh. Add anything but the takeover of all the education and rent controls is gonna absolutely ruin the sector. I cannot support this.
Thank you. Do I have any further speakers? There being no further speakers, um councillor Veach, do you wish to close the debate?
Councillors, this is an opportunity to advocate to the state government. So often, uh, and I a hundred percent supported councillor Asgari's motion, which was writing to the federal government, which was appropriate to do. We should be advocating to every level of government and because the L G New South Wales Conference is coming up. It was also appropriate to put something to that conference. And so it's in addition, uh complimentary to councillor Asgari's uh motion. State governments do have a very strong role uh in education, as we all know. I cannot think of almost anything more important than the safety and welfare of young children. And in fact, um, we know that actually councils have outsourced many of their um. What were formerly public council-run childcare centres to private operators. So in fact, councils in many cases are the landlords. And would have the ability to uh. Do something about the rents. We know that many businesses, in fact, let alone childcare centres, are affect by, affected by um. Rapacious landlords who are just constantly hiking up rent. I know of a number of businesses, successful small businesses. Who, both in our L G A and other parts of Sydney, who have been forced to close down because they simply have not been able to afford. The uh disgusting rent rises that have been imposed on them by landlords. That uh, that is literally just a response of to the market that's happening out, that's going on out there at the moment. So I really urge you to support this motion. I don't see this as being controversial. You're just simply saying, please look after our kids and fund uh public council-run. Childcare centres which our community uh respects and trusts. Thank you.
There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? There's been a request from divisions councillors Hamilton and Rosenfeld. Um, all those in favour, please raise your hand. We have councillors Wellington, Veach and Asgari. All those against? We have councillors Hamilton, Magna, Hay, Luxford, Gordon, Rosenfeld, Martin. Wilson, Sed, Burst, D'Souza and the me. You know, it's now lost. Okay, we now move on to. Uh, N M eighty-five slash twenty-five from councillor Wellington, protecting street trees for compliant development.
Um, I'm with this in a slightly amended fashion. Mister Kelly, you have the amendment. Thank you. Um, amend point G to read. Um, G submits points A, B, C and E of this motion and background. To the local government, New South Wales twenty twenty-five annual conference, seeking support to advocate for legislative reform. To ensure consistent protection of public trees across all development types. Thank you. Um, in the interest of time, um, I take this motion as read. Um. Yeah, you're right. Yeah, you're on the right page. Um, I'll take the motion as read. Um, it came to my attention um a few weeks ago. That a street tree in Coogee had been damaged during a cons- um construction on a clearing of a site. Um, and it became, when I uh. Got back to the resident who who was concerned about this, it became clear um that the site had been um. Uh, appro- approved under a complying development certificate. Um, and after more investigation, it. I was surprised to learn that there is no mandatory or any provision. In fact, in relation to publicly owned trees, um when a development is um approved under a C D C. And this is con- in stark contrast to the requirements under a D A. Um, which you would all be familiar with and are outlined in the motion. Um, my uh motion. Uh seeks to take this important uh discrepancy uh to local government, New South Wales. And um also to write to this relevant state ministers. Um, so that street trees, which are a valuable public asset worthy of protection, whichever development pathway is being applied. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do I have a seconder? Seconded by coun-. Seconded by councillor Magna. Uh, I reserve my rights. Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I take it you don't wish to close the debate on yourself. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to N M eighty-six slash twenty-five. Notice of motion from councillor Hay. Councillor Hay, could you please outline what is you're moving? I'll then call for a seconder.
I was per the business paper.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder?
What is it? Oh, yeah, sorry.
Seconded by councillor Luxer.
To the right page.
Thank you.
Uh, look, I'll I'll mostly take this as read. Look, we're gonna have a new uh, on Barker Street, we're gonna have a new uh. Have a new uh mini supermarket, mini mall. Does it make sense uh to uh move the bus stop in front of that? We've also got new roads. We've had a large change to the substantive traffic here. You've got, you've had the changes from the light rail, which uh. Has almost completely shut down High Street, uh forcing uh traffic elsewhere. You've changed the location of an emergency. You've got more rat runs happening. Let's take a look. And let's make sure the uh traffic is appropriately handled. At least after the construction of the new uh mini mall has finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Luxer does the seconder?
Yeah, um, this study is needed uh in the, in that particular area. There is a problem with Young Street, there's a problem with the buses. Um, I had raised. The bus issue several times with previous traffic manager to no avail. Um, something needs to be done because there will be serious accident. Uh, up there in that Newmarket area with the buses, with the traffic. The roundabout coming out of the uh hospital. There's like ambulances flying, there's all sorts of things happening in Barker Street up there and um. A traffic study around that area uh is is needed. So, uh, please support.
Thank you. Uh councillor Veach.
Uh, thank you. I've got an amendment which I've sent through to Mister Kelly, which is just to um add a point E. Uh, which reads ensure that pedestrian, public transport and active transport access to the hospital campus. And Ryan Randwick High School is prioritised. So councillors, there have been complaints for a number of years about from some of the Newmarket residents. Who live near the bus stop. They don't like the bus stop there. However, that bus stop uh services a massively busy area. Namely, uh, the Prince of Wales Hospital and Women's Hospital, Royal Women's Hospital. Uh, and what was previously Randwick Girls and Randwick Boys, but which is now the Randwick High School. So, we need this bus stop there. To get to this very, very busy area, which wa- was there before Newmarket, in all honesty. Um, the hospital that was there, the school was there and the students. Uh, the school, the staff at the school, as well as staff and patients and families going to the hospital, need to be able to. Get there by pub- public transport. Moving the bus stop. There are issues there. It is a very congested road. Uh, people are getting frustrated. But similarly, residents uh who live fifty metres down the road, they don't want the bus stop moved. Because it will just inconvenience them. It'll just shift the problem to other uh residents who, in actual fact, have. Live there for much longer than the Newmarket residents. They're in the sort of struggle town area. So. We need to ensure that any study, make sure that we are allowing people to access these hugely busy areas. And not introduce more cars, uh or inconvenience hospital patients. By forcing them to walk even further to the hospital if they're catching the bus. They need to be able to actually get there quite quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder for the amendment? I'm, I'm actually. Sorry, are you happy to accept it?
I'm happy to accept. Look, we're talking about moving a bus stop fifty metres. I don't think it's as dramatic as. Uh, yeah, probably even less. I I don't think it's as dramatic as uh the changes councillor Veach is suggesting, but. Look, at the end of the day, I'm I'm happy to accept the amendment, so let's just get this happening.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers. I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to notice of motion from councillor Martin, D V Safe Phone Initiative. Um, uh, move councillor Martin, seconded by councillor Hamilton. Councillor Martin?
Uh, thank you. Yes, um, uh, please, um, in the interest of time, read the uh notice of motion as is. Thank you. Our council has already taken a a range of important actions to provide community leadership and advocacy. To address domestic and family violence. This motion puts forward another opportunity for council to make a direct contribution to delivering support and safety to victim survivors. As one of the first police domestic vi- viol- violence as an officers in this state, this matter is very important to me. It was at the time when mobile phones were just being introduced into society. The use of phones by perpetrators' control and monitor their victims was a problem back then and is an even greater concern today. The D V Safe Phone collects donated phones, refurbishes them. And for phones that are acceptable for use as a safe phone, they reuse them, allowing victims to connect with family, friends and agencies. Currently, the closest D V Safe Phone collection point is at Bondo Junction and the closest agency. For uh a D V Safe Phone provider is at Mascot. This motion proposes that staff investigate and consider various ways to contribute to this initiative. Including identifying suitable locations as collection points and encourage local organisations to consider becoming an agency. To help maximise its impact in providing support and safety to victims, survivors of domestic violence within our community. This motion is also for council to consider linking this initiative to our sixteen days of activism. And its launch to our Step Out and Speak Out Walk in November two thousand twenty-five. Thank you.
I just commend this motion and I believe that there's no reason why we can't just vote for it.
Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? Uh, all those against? Declare that carried. Okay, we now move to um. Uh, N M eighty-eight slash twenty-five, enhancing battery disposal options moved by councillor Asgari. Um, do you, are you moving as per the business paper? Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor D'Souza. Councillor Asgari, please move your motion.
Uh, thank you Mister Mayor. I put forward a notice of motion in June council meeting, N M fifty-nine slash twenty-five. Report into safety battery disposal, asking council to bring back a report on initiatives to improve. Battery safety in our community. And here I would like to thank Director City Planning for the great job they did. And following that, um, series, um. They, this motion was following a series of recent fires in council garbage trucks. This year caused by improperly discarded battery-powered items such as laptops. Tablets, phones, power tools and toys. These batteries, especially lithium types, pose a serious fire risk when compacted during waste collection. Following my motion earlier this month, I wrote an email to manager Sustainability and Resilience. And proposed exploring additional drop-off options in more convenient locations. Similar to the battery location bins available at Bonning's and other retailers. And mentioned that, mentioned that one potential partner could be EcoPat. A battery recycling company that may provide collection containers or boxes at no cost. As they benefit from materials collected. They replied and shared some of the measures they have in place and their recent new initiatives. Helping our community keep batteries out of bins. They provide household battery collections at four council locations, Randwick Recycling Centre. Uh, admin buildings, Des Redmond Leisure Centre, Sustainability Club. As well as they have recently expanded collections at Randwick Recycle Centre to include waves and embedded batteries. And also we have.
One of order to two mi- the two minutes have been extended.
Sorry, thank you. Can I have a procedural motion to extend the speaking time by two minutes? Thank you. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Please continue councillor Asgari.
You, sorry about that, but it's worth listening. There are, there are hundred sixty collection points within ten kilometres of Randwick suburbs. Including Coles-Randwick at Belmore Road, Bonning's Warehouse, corner of Cloverley Road and Beverly Library. This is not an isolated issue. Councils across the country are facing similar challenges. Beverly Council, for instance, has also reported several truck fires over the past two years directly linked to the. Lithium batteries being placed in general waste. And similarly, two regional educational campaigns was launched. In partnership with E P A and S S Rocks, as well as community education. Story in Scene Magazine, Echo Living, saw last weekend. That promoted proper, proper battery disposal, Randwick Recycle Centre tools. And U N S W student arc com- arc communication. And they also mentioned some other options that they can assist, like some other locations such as our libraries. Lexohop and Museum, for example. We could consider reaching out to our various self-life saving clubs to see if they would support having a collection being there. However, this might be a concern, concern for them as each location needs to meet. Their B cycle risk assessment and emerg- and emergency management requirements, which they may not be willing to take. And recently, like yesterday, it was reported in the news that due to increased fire risks. Converted e-bikes will be banned from New South Wales Rail Network starting first November. This decision follows multiple incident linked to the lithium-ion battery technology used in the bikes. But the good news is that it doesn't include the standard e-bikes. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor D'Souza is the seconder of the motion. Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers. Councillor Veach? Yes, I say councillor Veach.
Yeah, I'd just like to uh rise to speak in support of this motion. I think one of the. It's quite convenient now to recycle um so many, so many of the products. Like uh plastic containers and paper products and so on. Um, but. When you don't have those drop-off points or collections, people just simply don't do it. So they just chuck them in the bin or stockpile them. Not knowing what to do with them. It's not, there's just not a lot of clear information as to what to do with all the old batteries. Uh, and they do pose a danger. So I I really support this motion. I think it'll be a really positive benefit for the community and I support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Asgari, do you wish to close the debate? Okay, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. There being, am I correct councillor, um councillor Veach?
Um, Mister Mayor, I would like to move a procedural motion. I would like to recommit my motion, which was um. N M eighty-four slash twenty-five in a slightly amended fashion. Under clauses, uh seventeen point one five and seventeen point one six of the code of meeting practice.
Thank you. Um, look, under seventeen fifteen and seventeen sixteen, I will allow by leave of the chair. As there was an error in relation to the nature in which it was going to be moved. Um, and for the, for for that fact, I will allow it with indulgence of the meeting. Just for the benefit of everyone, you are striking out point seven and and eight, is that correct? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Are there any further speakers? One of order, how exactly was that an error in how it was moved? There was.
Point of order, how exactly was that an error in how it was moved? It was exactly as written on the business paper. And uh how is that an error?
Thank you. In relation to that, councillor Veach?
Um I do flag many of my motions uh beforehand. And I think there was an understanding that this would be moved and I had meant to amend it.
Okay.
But I forgot.
Alright, thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. She's just recommitted it to to correct an error. So there's been a request from a division from councillor Hamilton. Okay, seconded by councillor Burst. It's alright. All those in favour, raise your hand please. We have councillors Wellington, Magna, Veach, Gordon, Asgari. Uh um Wilson and the mayor, all those against? We have councillors Hamilton, Hay, Luxford, Rosenfeld, Martin, Sedd, Burst and D'Souza. I declare it. I think that is lost actually, yes. Alright, thank you. We can now move on. Um to. Yeah, the rescission motion. So the mover of the rescission motion, uh N R three slash twenty five. Um councillor Martin, is that correct? And then the secondo is councillor Hamilton. Councillor Martin, so what, so how, so this runs is that we have um. A mover and a seconder as to why it should be rescinded. In the event that it is carried, we then have the substantive debate and I'll call on you to move your alternative motion. So. You're now speaking as to why the decision as previously passed should be rescinded. Councillor Martin.
Yes, thank you. Um perhaps I might just take councillor Rosenfield's lead like he did before and say that um. I'm the only, actually the only councillor that lives in Coogee. Do you live in Coogee? Okay, alright. I I apologize to you. Um however, timing is crucial um here in this matter. Most councillors I've spoken to are in favour of the lights. And most agree the community consultation will come back positive. Any delay will prevent the lights from being turned on before the festive season as was originally planned. And the chance to light up these lights with our Christmas tree at Coogee possibly lost. In fact, with no commu- a council community consultation taking place until late October. With a report back time taken in order to order them, which is approximately six weeks and then to install. They may not even be up in time for our Coogee Lights Programme, which has been proposed to start at the first week of February. Noting that there was no community consultation last time these lights went off. And emphasis is on a trial. One would think the community would be better off consulting on something that they can see and feel and be a part of. To enable them to make a more informed decision to either take them down or leave them up. I would like you to consider all the above reasons tonight together. With the view of the Coogee Chamber of Commerce that presented here tonight and we vote and vote for the rescission motion.
Thank you, councillor Hamilton.
Uh yeah, look, I think that it needs to be rescinded because it was put up in good faith. The community, the businesses all said that they supported it. Councillors that are in the room saying they supported it. And then the councillors decided to um steal it away and change it. And that shouldn't have happened and it should just be moved by councillor Martin and continued on.
Thank you. Okay, the two mover and seconder of the rescission motion have now spoken to it. The question is um that the matter be rescinded. All those in favour say aye? All those against say no. No. There's been a request for a division moved councillor Hamilton and councillor Martin. Um all those in favour of the rescission, please raise your hand. Okay, we have councillors Hamilton, Hay, Luxford, Rosenfeld, Martin. And Burst, all those against? We have councillors Wellington, Magna, Veach. Gordon, Asgari, Wilson, Sedd and D'Souza and the mayor. I declare the rescission lost. Thank you. Now move to the confidential session. We'll just give it a minute. Thank you. If you could please tell me when the recording is stopped. Thank you. I will reopen the ordinary council meeting uh in open session at ten. Forty P M. The outcome of C C thirty two slash twenty five A V and production management for the Anzac Day and Coogee Carols. Tender number T twenty twenty five dash seventeen was carried unanimously uh as per the business paper. Uh C C thirty three slash twenty five Randwick City Awards for Sporting Achievements Sports Awards. Um was carried as per the business paper. Confidential Director of City Services report, uh uh C O fifty four slash twenty five lease for Clavely Beach Cafe Kiosk. Was carried unanimously as per the business paper. C O fifty five slash twenty five supply provision of C C T V and access control infrastructure and services tender. Was carried unanimously as per the business paper. C S sixty slash twenty five, one to eleven Rainbow Street, Kingswood Development. Uh the general manager made a declaration and absented himself from the meeting. Uh it was carried uh in an amended fashion. Uh a- and the record of the amendment will be uh recorded in the minutes. Uh that was carried. You, that was carried. Thank you. There being no further business, I declare the meeting closed at ten forty P M. Thank you.
Thanks, Mister Mayor.